I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Groton on Monday, August 12th. Thank you all for being here. We have just come out of the first part of our executive session and we'll be heading back in at the conclusion of our regular business meeting. As is usual, we have announcements and we'll review the agenda, followed by a public comment period, the town manager's report. Fairly short, if not concise. We have the Select Board's agenda scheduled. We will consider appointing Sally Hensley to the Board of Registars and determine filling the Republican Member of Registars slot that's available right now. We will get an update from the Water and Superintendent regarding the Whitney Well Treatment Project. At 7:15, we are slated to meet with the Police and Fire Chiefs to discuss appropriate levels of public safety for our community. Under Other Business, we will have a discussion of the Select Board email address and how that's handled. We then have A through L of our ongoing issues where we may get updates and ask questions, Select Board Liaison Reports, one set of minutes to review and approve, and then back into our executive session. Announcements.
I'm gonna, not really an announcement, but I'm gonna excuse myself from the meeting to go downstairs. The CPC needs me, so when Tom Orkut comes up to give his presentation, it's not any disrespect, Tom, I need to go, I need to go downstairs.
Very good. Other announcements?
I do have one. With our discussion on the Select Board for the plastic bag issues in town, one of our fine citizens, Joanne Shaw, has come up with an alternative to plastic bags and recycling t-shirts, and she made these bags for your groceries out of recycled t-shirts. Mine happens to be the Red Sox, but they're not doing so well, so...
You're gonna recycle that and recycle that?
She went ahead and made them for everyone, and it's offered to make them for seniors or anybody else that's, but it's just thinking out of the box and shows that people are paying attention, and so we'd just like to thank Joanne for that.
Absolutely.
Very creative, yeah.
And we're usefully recycling the t-shirts.
Right. You wouldn't want to put groceries in mine after I wore it. I'm just saying.
Any other announcements? Moving along. All right, any public comment, questions, anything? All righty. Not seeing any, then Mark, we'll move on to your report.
Okay, I'm gonna jump into item number two of your last meeting. I brought to the Board the recommendation for the town clerk to reappoint Sally Hensley to the Board of Registars. The Board was concerned that the Republican Town Committee had not submitted a nominee, and the term of the current Republican representative on the Board had their term end in 2018. So you wanted to know what steps can be taken in the event that the Town Committee does not submit a nominee. So Mass General Law, Chapter 51, Section 15. I just want to talk about the highlighted section here. If the Chairman of the Town Committee has not submitted such list to the Selectment or the Appointing Authority within 45 days after notification to said Chairman by certified mail, which by the way, the town clerk did, the Selectment or the Appointing Authority, in this case, it's the Select Board, shall make said appointment without reference to such list. So what I would suggest to the Board that we do is we advertise a vacancy on the Board of Registars for a Republican position. Or, if you choose not to fill the other one, because I'm also recommending you reappoint Sally Hensley as the Democrat on the Committee, so you'll have two Democrats, a Republican vacancy, and the unenrolled town clerk. That's the way the Board will be made up. So I'm recommending tonight that the Board advertise a vacancy for a Republican on the Board of Registars, and have registered Republicans apply, and then reappoint Sally Hensley to the Board of Registars for a three-year term, as recommended by the Democratic Town Committee and the town clerk. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Mark.
Yes.
Is the Board of Registars required to have one Democrat and one Republican at a minimum, or is it, are we looking for a Republican, are we looking for a, not a Democrat?
It's a great question. You need to have, you can't have more than two of any party on the Board. So you can have two Democrats, one, two, you could have two Democrats and two Republicans if the town clerk was in one of those parties. You could have one unenrolled, two Democrats or Republican, or one unenrolled, one Democrat, two Republicans. Right now, the Board was made up of one unenrolled, two Democrats, and one Republican. If you reappoint Sally Hensley, you would have two Democrats and unenrolled, and you would be required by law to fill that with a Republican.
So it has to be a Republican, it can't be an independent?
Correct. It has to be a Republican.
Two leading political parties, it says there in the third line.
Yes. So it has to be a Republican.
Okay. Thank you. John?
As I look at the material you sent us, I wonder, have we formally and by certified mail notified the Chair of the Republican Committee?
Yes. The town clerk did.
We're sure we've done that?
Yes, I'm sure we've done that.
Okay.
The town clerk, as a matter of fact, assured me that he had done that.
Now, it seems...
I believe him.
It seems to me, as I read this, that the way it should work in any, in any given year, and assuming both, both the Republican and the Democratic, the Democratic Town Committees are operating appropriately, that to fill a position, whether it was Republican or Democrat, that Committee would suggest three people to come, and the Board would select one of those three people. That's what this says.
That's exactly what that says, but what our practice has been is the town clerk gets the list from the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee, and gives you the name of each party's nominee. So for example, in previous years, when you had an active Republican Town Committee, in this particular year, say, the Democratic Town Committee would have recommended Sally Hensley, and the Republican Town Committee would have recommended somebody else, a Republican, and then the Board has the opportunity to choose either the Democrat or the Republican, depending on the vacancy. As I said to the Board at our last meeting, in years past, we had two Republicans and one Democrat on the Town Committee and the unenrolled town clerk. Several years ago, the Board decided to switch it, and when a Republican seat came up on that Board, the Board appointed a Democrat instead of reappointing the Republican to that seat.
The way I read this, if we needed to, if a, let's say we've got two and two, and one of the Democratic Registars resigns, that the Democratic Town Committee would then provide us with three names?
Correct.
And the Board would decide which of those three?
Correct.
So what you're describing is something that's different from what the state law says, and I'm just wondering how we do that?
We ask for the names, they give us the names, and then the town clerk has been recommending to the Board...
I know, but that's not what this says.
I understand that, but we still get the three names.
We should get back to doing it the way it says here.
Okay.
I believe. Because that's what it says.
But there is no functioning Republican Town Committee right now to give us even one name, so I think...
Yeah, so you don't have to refer to the list to fill the...
So we don't have to go to a list to fill that one, I understand that.
And the other is, we're just reappointing the same person who has been on...
That's what I'm recommending.
I'm in support of Mark's recommendation for how we should proceed. My only question was, who, who do they apply to? Do they do this through the town clerk?
No, to you. This office.
So if we were so fortunate as to have three or four people apply, we would then bring all of them to a meeting and ask them each to speak, and then we would choose one?
Correct.
Okay.
So we could wind up with more than three?
You could wind up with a hundred Republicans coming forward.
Right. If that's what they wanted to do.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation.
I'm fine.
So does someone want to make a motion to that effect, or do we, Mark, are you looking for a vote?
I want you to do one thing. I want you to say to me, "Mark, advertise a vacancy for a Republican on the Board of Registars."
I move that we direct the town manager to advertise a vacancy on the Board of Registars and to solicit Republican volunteers for that vacancy.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would ask the Board to consider reappointing Sally Hensley to a three-year vacancy on the Board of Registars.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank, I'm sorry for the confusion, confusing explanation. Confused explanation, somebody's confused. Number three, I'd ask Tom Orkut, and I see Jack is here as well, if you want to come up to the table, to talk and update the Board on the Whitney Well required improvements. While Tom does that, with the Board's approval, I'd like to be dismissed to go downstairs to see the CPC. I'll be back.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Do you have slides to show on?
I don't, I have some more to talk to you.
Okay. Thank you. This looks like a cellphone company's distribution.
So the cover sheet for those, just to give you a brief visual of the document we're looking at, the map of the United States with manganese levels in the soil shown everywhere. Very colorful.
So, good evening. I have Jack, Chairman of the Board of Water, just with me here. And this is an issue that has slowly crept up on the Water Department, the Water Commission.
And is this just for, this is the first time we're kind of hearing about this in a still way?
This is, so I'm gonna give you a 10,000-foot, and then bring it down to a point where I don't want to give you too much information, because we're gonna go into negotiations with DEP.
Absolutely, but we're not straining to remember what we learned last time.
So for about 10 years, we've been testing various things in the water, and manganese was on a three-year cycle. Once every three years, we would test for iron and manganese in our sources. Currently, down at Batacook, we have iron and manganese removal through a green sand filtration plant that was part of a $6 million capital project. We're five, 15 years into it with five more years. That's a key point. Five, five more years to go on our debt schedule.
I'm sorry, Tom, why did you say five more years to go on our what?
Debt schedule.
Debt schedule.
So, so we have a 20-year capital program that we've undertaken. We're 15 years into it, with five years remaining on the debt schedule.
On the debt, okay, thank you.
And that, that project entailed some water mains and tanks and a green sand filtration plant down at Batacook.
Thank you.
So we monitor various things, and every three years, they come out with a new compliance schedule for monitoring various things in the water, iron and manganese being one of those. And over the past 10 years, every three years, we test for iron and manganese down at Whitney and Batacook. Most recently, over the past three years, the manganese and iron down at Whitney Well has slowly increased in terms of its milligrams per liter in what we drink, so we've been put on a one-year testing schedule. And most recently, a year ago, they ratted that up to quarterly, because the levels increased even more. And last fall, we exceeded, I think that's on page...
0.05 or...
0.3 milligrams per liter is the health advisory. So we've been hovering, you know, anywhere between 1 and 2, and most recently, back in the fourth quarter of 2019, we exceeded that 0.3 milligrams per liter.
Okay, so when you say we're hovering between 1 and 2, it's 0.1 and 0.2?
0.1. 0.2 milligrams per liter. And so then we did more intensive analysis on our own. We have some of the equipment that doesn't require a certified lab, and we go to monthly, we did bi-weekly, we changed different pumping scenarios down at the wells, pumped more this one, less of that one, slowed it down, you know, took it offline for a period of time to see if we could live with Batacook only, to see if we could manipulate some of the numbers and get them down, and they, they're up there. We can't, we can't get around it. And there were, there were periods of times, two years ago, where we'd have zeros down at Whitney. So, what people need to understand is iron and manganese is a naturally occurring mineral. It's required in your diet at certain levels. When you get to certain levels of like 0.3 milligrams per liter and above, it does become a health advisory by DEP. And we did exceed that in the fourth quarter of last year, and we did receive a letter from DEP in January, in February of 2019, looking for us to come up with some solutions to the situation. We have hired, our consultants, CEI are here, they have met with the Board on a number of occasions, on some lengthy meetings and discussions about alternatives. And we looked at a number of scenarios. We looked at bringing on two of our fully permitted wells, whether it be Uncity Brook out off Chickaby Row, looking at the Shattuck site, looking at our Serrendan Farm site, looking at West Groton, a whole host of scenarios that our consultants ran, different cost scenarios for us, to see what is the best solution to remedy the situation. There are other chemicals to mask iron and manganese at this level are not acceptable to DEP. So you could add a chemical, but it won't take the chemi, the iron and manganese out of the water. There's ways you can mask it at certain levels. That's not an option. We looked at blending, using, trying to use more Batacook water to blend it. It's not an option. If you were to develop the Shattuck site and not use Whitney, the Shattuck site isn't sufficient in supply for our needs. If you were to develop Uncity Brook and Shattuck, it is not sufficient to meet our demands into the future. And you'd be giving up a 900 gallons a minute site down at Whitney Well, and trying to prove some other potential wells that would eventually need treatment at some point anyways. So, this, I know this is the first time you're hearing about it, it's really the first time the Board's been dealing with it all spring. It is a very costly endeavor that we're embarking on. We have to reply to DEP by September 1st as to what we want to negotiate with them in terms of a treatment process. We will get an administrative consent order from DEP in January, so there's a six-month window that we will negotiate a schedule to comply. What we want to do is to hopefully negotiate a schedule that allows us to get through the next five years of our operating budget, which entails $400,000 in the current debt schedule, and not add another $400,000 or $500,000 to our operating budget with additional debt. We don't know what DEP's gonna allow us to do, and that's why we're gonna negotiate a schedule with them and a compliance plan. But we need to get below the 3 milligrams per liter, or 0.3 milligrams per liter. And the only way to do that is with treatment. We have looked at developing a site at Whitney Well, and we have looked at a modified, what we're calling a modified plan, is to add on to the facility down at Batacook and pipe the water from Whitney to Batacook. So we have one treatment plant. Although it'll be larger, it's more cost-effective to have operators at one plant than at two different plants, and being all over the place, because you, you still have the same process and procedures of operating one facility or two facilities, and you can't do it with two men plus me. So, the staff is all on board with trying to fit this facility at Batacook. The numbers are much more favorable than the eight or nine million dollars we're looking at for a capital project in five years or four years. In this five-year window, there's a number of things we need to do. We need to pilot some treatment processes. We know it's gonna be green sand, but you still have to go through these processes that they want to see in test results, and that's costly. The repairs is, is their health and the cost to treat are the two things that are at the forefront of the Board. We need to keep the rates at a stable price that we can afford, but we also have to look after the health and the benefit of the public that drink the water. One of the things we're looking at is to maybe pipe the water over and treat some of it at Batacook, and then enlarge Batacook, but that's part of the negotiation process that processing we'll have to endeavor. So Jack and I are here to answer your questions. I know it's a, it's a highly technical issue, but it's pretty straightforward in our minds as to what we need to do to comply. But I'm happy to answer, and can you continue to update the Board as we move forward?
Thank you for coming. Questions?
I have a couple of questions. Is this the first time the public's being made aware of this particular issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let me correct you. There are some, there is some information that we posted on our website about iron and manganese and the health effects. That is on our website for people to read.
Along with others, it's not in a context of specific to Groton's water. It's just a general description of, here's what manganese in water can cause to happen.
Right, right.
Okay. Does our website show what our current content per liter?
Yes.
Of manganese is?
All the customers, on a regular basis, every year, we do a Consumer Confidence Report, which is also on our website, and the Consumer Confidence Report lists what the chemicals are that are in our water that we test for, and iron and manganese is on there, those levels.
So where are we at tonight?
In terms of...
Manganese per liter?
I think, I think we're at 0.32 milligrams per liter. We're just over the threshold, and we've been over the threshold on a quarterly basis, but just enough that they say you have to treat.
Tom, I have a question.
Yes.
We're running Batacook, and that together is a lower as well?
So, yeah. And during the five-year period, and it's actually would be longer than that, I guess, because either you start the building of the $7 million project a couple of years before the five years are up, or you start building it on year six?
No, I...
So, in the interim, in the interim, how are we gonna address this?
Well, I'm gonna answer that in two parts. I don't want to speak specifically as to what the consent schedule is gonna look like, but more than likely, they're gonna want to have something online within the five years, not in year six and seven. I don't know what they're gonna request of us. We have...
All right, I understand, you've got to negotiate through that.
But we also have a, we'll be asking them for some type of a modified plan where we could pipe the water from Whitney over to Batacook and treat the water at Batacook, and then expand the Batacook treatment facility, and maybe in years four or five, or something like that.
So what I'm trying to understand is, between now and when, whatever new is gonna be brought online, what are the steps you anticipate taking to drive this down as far as we can?
In terms of the price or in terms of the schedule?
No, to drive down the content per milliliter, the manganese content per...
We would try and pipe it over to Batacook and treat it in some time, in some timeframe.
So you're treating it at the Whitney Well now?
No, we don't, we don't.
You don't treat it all now?
No, we don't, we don't treat it all.
So you would start treating at the Whitney Well?
At Batacook.
Like Batacook?
Yeah. I don't, I can't, I don't know the specific date of when that's gonna happen, but it won't be tomorrow, and it won't be next year, and it won't be in two years. I can guarantee you that. There's our steps that we have to take with DEP in terms of the compliance schedule. You have to do some piloting of different treatment processes, and you have to bid it, you have to design it, so there's a, there's a whole schedule of engineering-related matters and DEP compliance matters that we have to follow. And then there's the bigger question, what's the affordability? We have 1,800 customers, and that's another $400,000 or $500,000 in debt.
Yeah, you're not gonna convince me to spend $7 million without showing me what the impact is on the subscribers.
It's a big one, and we're not here to ask the tax base to pick up the cost of that either.
I know, I don't think that's gonna fly either.
Right, that's a ratepayer cost.
I'm fine.
Okay. Other questions? Yeah?
I guess I'm a little, I'm totally surprised by this. Did you say you have a consultant that you're working with?
Yes.
And who is that?
CEI, they're the ones that have been working with us on the compliance schedule, comprehensive environmental engineers.
Okay. And you said that the first time that we exceeded the 0.3 standard was a year ago?
It was in December, the fourth quarter of 2018.
Okay.
And we were notified in February of what corrective measures we needed to...
And you've been trying to figure out what to do?
We've been meeting with the consultants and the Board about corrective measures and a plan that we could comply with.
And, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you're hoping to negotiate a plan that involves bringing water from the Whitney Well to Batacook, where you're gonna build some sort of treatment facility?
Expanded facility.
So, I'm not really remembering in my head the geography. Does that mean you have to, would be digging a trench and laying pipe between Whitney Well and Batacook?
Yes.
And that is sort of like across Route 40 and...
All the way down Route 40.
Okay, so this is like a long process?
It is.
And expensive, as you've said?
Expensive, and a lot of engineering's gonna go into this.
And there is, I remember, I've lived in Groton 45 years, and in the early years, there was a real problem with manganese in my water, and in, in a lot of people's water in Groton.
Yeah.
And I, that went away, I guess because you upgraded pipes or something?
No, so the issue, I believe you referred to is the Shattuck Well, when it was being used prior to Whitney Well being built?
Okay.
And the Shattuck Well didn't have the capacity to meet the needs with Batacook, and they actually broke the seal in the aquifer and started pulling in more surface water, and that was where you had your issues. And then they built the Whitney Well, and that's when that manganese issue went away for the community.
Okay.
But Shattuck had very limited possibilities in terms of its pumping capability. My understanding is that that seal was broken to the surface water.
Okay. I thought it was to do with old iron pipes, which, when you live in an old house, that's what we get.
Some of it is with the piping system, but a lot of it is what you produce and bring into the system. But we flush twice a year, and we've been doing that for the last 15 years since I've been in charge, and that helps control that issue.
So, if this, it sounds like there's nothing you can do in the interim to, as a stopgap measure, to reduce the manganese level?
Not, and not maintain the demand on the system, and what people want to, you know, use for water. I mean, obviously, the more you pump and the harder you pump, you're gonna introduce more iron and manganese into the system, but the iron and manganese is in the aquifer, and you're not gonna, you can't get rid of it, it's not gonna go away.
And is there anything that the homeowner can do? Can they install some kind of...
You could put a home filter in, and people can do that, and people do have those, they can, they have whole-house filters, they have filters on their taps. It's not an acceptable practice for DEP as an option. We couldn't buy filters for every household.
But that's because DEP...
They wouldn't allow that, right, but homeowners can do that.
Homeowners can do it, and it, and it can reduce then your exposure to this, if you're, if you're concerned. if you're concerned.
Right.
But DEP's interest is in having...
Treat it at the source.
Having the problem solved at the source. I understand that.
Filters bring on a whole different issue for DEP and why that's not a suitable solution because if folks don't change the filtered cartridges on a regular basis, filters harbor bacteria and you will get sick in a different manner.
Right.
So, that's why they don't allow them.
Well, so, going back to the high levels of manganese that I was used to 40 years ago, 45 years ago, the conventional wisdom at that point was it's iron and it's not harmful. But it sounds like DEP over the years has decided that that's not quite true.
Well, science has taken on, and doctors and physicians have studied the effects of iron and manganese. And there was a recent study, I think, as recent as five years ago, the Canadian...
Canadians.
Canadians did a study and found that, you know, higher levels of iron and manganese, manganese were not, were not good for the body. Too much is, is not good.
Affect the IQs of young children.
Right.
That's just a recent study and only the DEP, not EPA, has taken that to heart. And some of that is their, their, they've taken a stronger and stronger stance given reports like that that are coming out.
Right. Well, that's good. I mean, it's good that we have better science. This estimated seven and a half million dollars, I think we need to make it clear that that's what this piece of paper says. Is this something that you have anticipated or has, there's anything been in the budget like we were expecting this?
This just came up in February in terms of what they want us to do. And these are the numbers that our engineers have worked with us on as to how we're going to treat this problem, how we're going to...
Yikes.
Yes. It is yikes.
And do we have...
Because we're just finishing up a six million dollar capital project and we still have five years to go.
Right.
It's a big number.
So the September 1st deadline, do we as our board or you as your board need to produce something?
The commissioners, commissioners are submitting a letter through our engineers to DEP, a response.
Okay.
If, if in the interim between now and when you're able to provide water at the point zero three level or whatever you get it down to...
Point zero three.
If a homeowner wanted to take steps to improve or reduce the manganese in the water that's coming off your system into their residential system, is it as simple, and it's relative, but is as simple as installing another big blue-type filter on my incoming line that's specifically for magnesium or manganese? Or is it something more complicated that...
It's as, it's as simple as installing any line filter.
And then regularly, if you're serious about it, regularly rotating filters out and new ones in.
You just...
So it's a single filter of a cer, of a certain size and a filter change?
You may want to filter on, put the filter on your kitchen sink tap.
Well, that's another way to do it.
Because you put on your whole-house filter and your filter in order to make it on the lawn and make it into the bathroom, the shower.
No, I'm just wanting to satisfy myself and those who might be watching that there are interim steps...
There are.
That aren't outrageously expensive, that people with concerns...
In the interim, yep.
Could take within their own facility to process your water to reduce the manganese content until you're able to do it for everybody. Okay, thank you.
So I have some questions as well. Kind of hand in hand with that private treatment plan, do we either kind of legally or otherwise owe the community some understanding of, you know, oh, the, the level is over point three today but not tomorrow? I mean, how does that...
Well, we have the Groton Herald here. I'm sure it's a...
Okay.
An article in the paper. Connie, right? And Connie's going to work with me on that article, right?
Yeah.
But we'll be putting things on the website as well, additional information. Certainly, once we get some more detailed information back from DEP on the response, certainly that information will go on, on, onto the website.
But at this point, like where it says infants should not be given water with manganese greater than point three?
That's on our website.
But can a parent also check and say like, oh, but today the level was point three, so we should be using bottled water like today or this week?
Well, we don't test, we don't test iron and manganese every day.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. So it's, it's kind of a...
We're on a quarterly testing regime with DEP. That's what they require us to do. We can do some in-house testing, but it's not certified by a lab. But the numbers pretty much match what the lab will do, so there are things that we can do, but they're not going to, there's not going to be regular updates on a week-to-week basis, but the manganese is coming out of the water on any given day. We just, I don't know if we can do that.
Okay.
Certainly not with a lab.
I, I think at some point then we need to have a conversation, and I don't know who has it, but about letting folks know that either infants shouldn't be drinking, you know, that, that, there needs to be some public education around this. I don't think it's enough to just say, oh, our manganese level is...
Right.
Is this the same problem that they had at the high school when that was first, when the water was shut off up there?
No.
Was that a, it was a different one? Okay. And what is the, and you may not know, which is perfectly fine, what is the Batacook, what is the treatment capacity there versus what it produces? How much surface capacity is there?
So, the Batacook green sand facility has two 400 gallon a minute green sand vessels and we currently pump 200 gallons a minute a day into one of those vessels and we rotate those vessels and backwash. That's why we were looking at trying to pipe some of the water from Whitney down to Batacook on an interim basis prior to expanding the facility. Because we'll need 1,600 gallons a minute at capacity. You'll need three full filters to run all the systems with one offline at a time so you can rotate and schedule maintenance weekly.
Yeah. So we need to maintain that, one online, one offline? We don't have the capacity long-term to run them both?
Right.
And this is what is keeping us at not greater than the point three two today? What you're describing? In other words, if those filtration things were here...
No, because the manganese is still coming out of the Whitney well and regardless of what comes out of Batacook filter...
Okay.
It's still coming out, exceeding it.
Thank you.
But if you brought it over to Batacook and treated some of it, you can get your numbers down.
And then in terms of looking at the map of kind of surrounding towns and whether they have treatment or not, can we or have we reached out to them to see kind of how they tackle this and whether they have some sort of...
They are...
Capacity to, to help us? Is that...
Getting water from another community is very difficult to do because they're all, you know, summer peak periods are, are a problem, so... But the map really identifies the communities that either have more comprehensive treatment than iron and manganese, but it also highlights communities that have iron and manganese. And I think that's in the red. And then there are communities with red with the hatch marches that are in the same compliance magnitude we are with DEP in terms of getting the iron and manganese out. So fortunately, we don't have some of the more elaborate systems that you see on the map because they are elaborate in terms of the chemicals they're treating for and other issues.
And they have those because they have more issues?
More, may I...
More comprehensive treatment.
Those communities that are in the gold color that have more extensive treatment...
They have more issues, other than iron and manganese.
They had problems with their water that are greater than the problems we have.
Much greater.
So, is it correct to say that based on this map, that there are a lot of other communities in the same situation we are in?
Yes.
Some are a little bit further along in negotiating their compliance plan?
Well, for instance, Pepple is, is under construction. I believe Lunenburg is about to start construction. The communities in green really don't have community water systems. Carlisle, Boxborough and Stell, they're very small systems. Bolton, Berlin. The communities in the gold color, they have extensive treatment or get water from the MWRA.
Right.
And the communities that are in the lightest yellow, only, they don't have any issues with regards to iron and manganese that exceeding the limits that DEP is going to require treatment today.
So there's no, are there communities that have successfully dealt with lowering their iron and manganese on this map?
Once it's present in the water, either you abandon the site and go try and find another site that doesn't have iron and manganese. That's something that we've looked at, but if it shows up, you've got to treat it. And why would you walk away from a site that gives you, you know, eight, 900,000 gallons a minute? That's the problem. If we leave Whitney, where do we go? We don't have sites that can brewze that much water.
And just to go back to what you were telling us at the beginning, now it's starting to make sense to me. It didn't, the Whitney well didn't used to have these levels.
They didn't. Whitney well did not have iron and manganese like it does today, 20 years ago.
Do we have any idea why that's changed?
There, there are a number of factors, but we noticed this really moving up in, in the levels when we had the drought. That was three years ago. That was a pretty intensive drought where our water levels really plummeted. Because it took us a number of years to get into the drought and it's taken us a number of years to get out. And the solution to pollution sometimes is dilution. And when you take that aquifer and you squish it down, your concentration levels are much greater and until it expands, and if it expands back up, you don't know if you're going to flush out that iron and manganese. We're in a pocket in the aquifer and it's there.
Right.
It's not, I don't see it going away. Neither does DEP.
Is there any option, Tom, to reduce kind of irrigation or kind of...
Well, those are some of the things that we played around with over the winter in terms of trying to minimize what we took out of Whitney one or Whitney two.
Yep.
Combined, single-use and trying to run Batacook as much as we could because that was the filtered source and it, to no avail.
Okay. Would you guys recommend that folks on private wells have similar testing done? Kind of independently of this, just...
I don't want to get on my soapbox with the Board of Health, but all private homeowners should always test their wells annually.
Okay.
Whether they do and what they test for is up to the homeowner.
Right.
It's recommended.
Okay.
One last question. Do you happen to know if the west Groton water supply has a magnesium problem?
Manganese.
I'm sorry, magne, manganese problem?
So they have, as you know, they, they constructed the Town Forest well. That does not have iron and manganese in it at the current time. Their other well field had issues with iron and manganese and so they tried to rehabilitate those wells and they don't run those wells as often.
So do they already have...
Currently, they do not.
Do they have a notice from the DEP that they've got to do something?
No, because they haven't, they have not exceeded the three milligrams per liter at, at this date.
Bud, you had your hand up.
Yes.
Bud had his hand up, isn't he?
Yeah.
Did you grab, grab a microphone, sir?
Oh, yeah.
The, two questions, Tom. One is you said that the, the iron manganese over time has gotten worse.
Has increased, correct.
And, and you don't see, and there's no history that says that what gets worse will ever get better just because it's just going to continue to get worse versus, you know, it didn't happen overnight and now all of a sudden it jumped first. Just seems strange. It jumped for some reason. Now it's just, not, not that they're going to change their mind on this, but...
Like I said, it really took effect in the, during the drought.
Right.
When the aquifer was really depleted. And that's when we started, started seeing the numbers really climb.
But now that the, you said it's, it's basically almost full or is full like, again, like it used to be or...
I don't believe we've totally rebounded from the drought. It took us, you know, three, four, five years to get in it, but I, I don't see the number going down to a level that would satisfy DEP.
Below point three?
It would actually have to be below two milligrams per liter at this point, yeah. It makes, once you exceed it, it makes it more difficult in terms of compliance.
So the, the second question then is if it's, point two is the right one or point three, which is supposedly a...
Yeah.
Danger zone or something. And it's going to take five years to get some plan in place. What happens to the uses of the water over five years at point three?
I mean, that's a question the board's been asking. You know, we needed to notify the public that, you know, there is a potential health hazard and certain populations should, should watch their intake on a daily basis.
And that's what the DEP says? That is the standard operating procedure? You just got to tell people just don't potentially have little kids drink water? Well, bottled water or...
It's more of the bottle and other, I believe it's immune.
So my concern is the DEP, they're going to give you a five-year plan knowing that for five years that in fact the community is going to potentially be at risk of five years? But that's the only solution because it takes five years to build something?
It would probably take us the five years to engineer and construct it and, you know, we do have annual rate hearings. We will more than likely be talking about this very issue in terms of trying to improve our cash basis reserves so that we can begin to do these engineering studies. We're looking for a transfer in the fall, $75,000 for engineering purposes specific for this out of our $450,000 we have in reserves. But it's going to take much more than that to engineer a seven or eight million dollar project and get it up and running, even if you phase construction.
Does the, does, does the testing continue quarterly?
Yes.
So you'll be able to monitor whether it drops below point three because the aquifer starts coming back for some men, or it just comes back because that's nature? Doesn't mean you're going to have to do the project, but the point is you'd be able to at least tell the people that it's down.
It's improving, right.
And so the, the danger level is not where it was, but...
And certainly it improves for the water department during the winter months because we can filter the water out of Batacook and not rely so heavily on the Whitney well. So there are some things we can do and there are things that the homeowners can do as well.
Yeah.
Is each well site, are they all tested separately?
Yes. We have a very comprehensive testing regime by DEP. It has every water supplier.
Is it worse in one well than the other? Do we know?
Yes and no. I mean, sometimes it changes. It's Whitney one or Whitney two and we, we don't, there's no rhyme or reason why one well is one, one month or one quarter is, is one way, but it does, it's kind of all over the place.
And you, you have to answer this by the first?
Yes. We have draft, we have draft letter, we're all ready to go.
Ready to answer it?
We're going to review it tonight. We've been meeting on a regular basis now.
Is there, besides the expanding Batacook, is that part of, you answered for the compliance plan?
Yes.
What else? Anything else or...
Piping raw water.
Piping, as you said, okay. It's part of the plan. Thanks.
I think the key, I think the key is to make sure that we get the word out through the paper, our website, that infants not drink this water and what remediations could be done to make sure that either with bottled water or filters of their own, how can a mother, whoever, make sure their young children are getting the water they need?
Does DEP have a fact sheet or something?
That's on our website.
That's on the website?
We took it right.
I think we need to highlight that a little bit more and make sure people...
Right. So it's, it's kind of infants and then I assume typically along with infants are kind of elderly immunosuppressed? That's standard, we've been kind of...
And we could probably, it's brain development is what they're more concerned about. So it's not necessarily the age, but the brain's not developing.
The young.
So, it depends in brain development.
You could put an insert in your bills?
We can put a notice under the bill, but I was thinking more of getting a link, have IT put something on the town's website that would direct them like...
Right over to, right over to our website.
I, I think both. I mean, there are a lot of people...
We want to do as much as we can, obviously, but...
But some people who still get a paper bill are going to see something that you put in there that's in print.
We can put notices right on it and, and direct them right to a specific place.
Right, yes.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Next on the agenda is the update. As the board is aware, one of our annual goals that we have is to determine the appropriate levels of public safety. So John Geiger has been the select board member assigned to that particular task and he's been working with me, Steele and Mike Leach on it. So both Mike and Steele are here tonight to do presentations to the board as to where we are right now and what we think the future is. So there's a PowerPoint presentation for both of them. So we flipped a coin. Mike lost, so he's going first. So Mike, it's all yours. Tell me when you want me to move to the next slide.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Just a real brief overview, the department is currently allotted 20 spots. There's two administrators, the chief, deputy chief, supervisors, patrol force, two school resource officers, a detective who functions as a court officer and a K-9 officer. Past three years, we've been dealing with two long-term injured on-duty situations and have not been able to fill two of the spots regarding, regardless of the full allotment. Previously it was nineteen and now it's twenty. One of those situations was resolved earlier this summer. The second one, we expect to hear within the next couple of weeks, the resolution of that. We hope to start recruiting and hiring process as soon as we hear that resolution. By the time that we were to, will be able to hire and train those two positions, we're probably looking at May or June before the operation, depending on what we get for candidates. Some, we might be able to get some that's getting training, we might not. So, that puts me next summer and that's one of the reasons at the annual, you see that I'm looking for, once we're up to full allotment with staffing, to be able to ask for another year to assess how the department staffing is working out. With the, the, the filling of the nineteenth position, that would immediately bolster patrol where we've been having used overtime and other shifting schedules to try to cover gaps. And the twentieth position would be satisfying the long-term goal of this department preceding even me being here, is that established in that position of a traffic officer. The initial duties that traffic officer would be enforcement and accident investigation and later on to include traffic management, traffic planning due to the projects we have coming up.
May, may I ask a question? So, to, to clarify what you're saying, when the previous police chief came forward and recommended four additional positions within the department, one was a school resource officer, which we took care of last year.
Yes.
Another was a traffic officer, another was a detective and another was a additional supervisor.
Supervisor, that's correct.
So, because we've never been at full allotment, you feel, we've already taken care of the, the resource officer. When you get that twentieth position and we get to full staffing, because of the way the operation is, you'd be able to assign it to that traffic function.
Correct.
Which will help resolve it and then take some time to look at the operation once you're at full allotment, determine if you need to do anything else.
That's.
So, you're in, so, okay.
So, that's, we're looking almost two years from now before I'd be really able to report back to you, just based on the timeframe it takes to get those positions hired, filled and trained.
But as far as your, you know, you've been chief now for a year.
Yes.
Congratulations. Your anniversary just came up, right?
It did, July fifteenth.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
So, after, after the first year, you, you, you as chief have never seen a full allotment of, of the department?
That's correct.
Ever. So, it'll be very hard for you to make a determination on what, what you need, but you're surviving.
Yes. Due to my management.
Due to your management, oh, absolutely. That goes without saying. Hey, that, that's called a swat ball you hit right out of the.
Thank you. So, that's pretty much the overview. I'm not, obviously, based on that, I'm not looking for any staffing. I'm trying to let you know where I, where we stand and where we're trying to go and hopefully I can report back to you as, as things progress. The next slide is more informational. It is the number one question I get as far as staffing. Officer Greg Stewart has been chosen to be the new K nine handler. Once he was put in place, he and other members of the department have been tasked with trying to find a replacement for Lola. And we are currently in the interview phase, so to speak, and we hope to have the unit up and running in September and actually training by the end of September. And we've had very, varying degrees of success, finding this whole range of dogs and we, we need the right one for our town and, and for our department, so I just want to put that on there.
And will, will that new officer come in for formal appointment so that we can all meet him or her?
Absolutely. I wanna make sure some of the basic obedience training is taking place for us.
Most important question, has Melissa signed off on your?
Melissa would say yes, that any dog, she needs a true dog. All right. So, next we're moving on to Communications Department and that's one of the reasons the Fire Chief Steele's up here with me because this, sometimes it's very easy to forget about our Communications Department. And I just wanna, I can't emphasize enough how important they are to the operations and the public safety departments in this town. They're easily looked, overlooked and sometimes we forget how demanding that job is. We are a regional PSAP, which stands for Public Safety Answering Point, nine-one-one response or answering point. And we're regional because we have the contract with the town of Dunstable. And I'll explain a little more about that and the benefits of being that. Our dispatch center receives calls for both police, fire and ambulance for both the towns of Groton and Dunstable. In addition, they're doing the nine-one-one, they're doing emergency medical dispatch, which I'll explain a little more after. Animal patrol officers for both towns, the utility departments for both towns and sometimes actually after hours from the town halls are closed, they're receiving calls for every department in both towns. Additionally, they're in charge of security for the police stations in both towns as well as other public buildings. They're, they're tasked with paying attention to the security surveillance. It is the ultimate multitasker's job and I, I really want to commend our dispatchers to a fantastic job with the, what they've been tasked to do. One, can we go to the next slide?
Yeah.
Just kind of talking about having the regional PSAP with Dunstable. Being a regional PSAP qualifies the town for grants from the state nine-one-one department. In the last years, several years annually, we're receiving close to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, which we use towards our, our wages, training and some development costs. Additionally, the agreement we have with the town of Dunstable covers providing their communication services as well as lockup for their arrests in the, in the form of another eighty-three thousand dollars. Without that regional agreement with Dunst- with Dunstable, most of that money goes away and it's been very harmful for funding our operation. The next slide is just a, it's just a more of a visual on all the things they have to deal with.
What was ACO on that?
Yes, my safe question.
ACO, animal control officer in both towns.
And DFD?
Where is it? I'm sorry.
DFD.
Dunstable Fire Department EMS, Water Department for both towns, Groton Electric, West Groton Water, Highway Department for both towns, in addition to the police and fire EMS for both towns. So, at times when it's busy, it can be very busy. And it's one of those positions that sometimes, what I'm gonna, when I get into this, sometimes we have two dispatchers working, sometimes we have one. Sometimes two isn't enough. And it's those, this is the type of situations, it's very difficult to plan for. You don't know when everything's gonna break loose and you need all that staffing. On the next slide, we have what is our current staffing levels. We currently have six full-time dispatchers, one permanent part-time and three relief dispatchers. In a typical work, on every work week, we have twenty-one eight-hour shifts that need to be covered. Right now, with the current staffing, we're able to cover ten of those shifts with one dispatcher and eleven of those shifts with two dispatchers. That is a likeness to one of our employees.
I was gonna say, which one?
That's Warren.
He looks real happy.
That's Warren. With that also, the dispatch supervisor is able to perform one shift of administrative work and he works four shifts on the desk. The, the requirements for a dispatch supervisor every year increase drastically as far as he's their, essentially their sergeant in the police world. And he's in charge of training them, making sure everybody is scheduled. He has to do quality control, means he has to go back, take a certain percentage of the calls and go through and make sure they're taken care of. And if there's mistakes, correcting them and remedial training, et cetera. And I found in an old contract, this is anecdotal, but in two thousand and five, the dispatch supervisor here had three administrative days and two days actually dispatching. And I would suggest that the responsibilities of dispatch supervisor or dispatcher in general are far more complicated now than they were in two thousand and five. I, I am kind of saying that we're kind of, we're in a critical need for one full-time dispatcher now. With that additional full-time dispatcher, we would be able to cover another four additional shifts with two dispatchers and would be able to increase the administrative time to two days for our dispatch supervisor. A very similar regional dispatch situation has been formed with the towns of Heron, Shirley more recently. And their agreement going into places, they would have two dispatchers on every shift all the time. Because that is the standard of care at this time and I'll go a little bit more into detail as far as the standard of care. If we were able to add two full-time dispatchers, we would be able to cover twenty of our twenty-one shifts with two dispatchers and still have two administrative dispatches. And if we go on to the next, I'd like to explain the reasoning for having the two dispatchers. Although calls over the last five years, they fluctuate every year, but they're all relatively in the same range. Sometimes we have spikes, sometimes they go lower and there's lots of different reasons that are out of our control for those. In the past, cell phone nine-one-one calls would go to a state police dispatch center and at that point they would farm them out to a local dispatch wherever the problem was. To give you an example, if we had a bad car accident, say at Four Corners, Shaw's, Shaw's Four Corners, and they get five, six, seven, eight, nine-one-one calls, the state police would vet those for the local dispatch. If they get five in a row for the same location with the same information, they don't send all five of those calls. Our dispatch would receive one or two. At this point, because the state police have relinquished that to the local PSAP, we get all those calls. And if I have one dispatcher, he or she has to answer those calls and they're trying to, you know, ascertain the need, the problems, dispatch people and the phone keeps ringing. And it's not where it's nine-one, they have to answer it and it gets very complicated. Second, well, in addition to that, because of a cell tower location in Tingsborough, northern part of Route Three, the southern part of Daniel Webster Highway, we get all their nine-one-one calls. So, dispatch, our dispatch center gets those and they have to transfer them to either Tingsborough Police or Fire, Nash or Police and Fire. And a lot of that is done through the phone. Sometimes they can transfer them directly over the nine-one-one system, sometimes they can't.
And that's because it's a Dunstable area.
Dunstable's the closest to that west side of that tower where the PSAP for Dunstable. So, that's additional calls that aren't not even, we don't even log them, so to speak. We'll let them know, we'll take record that we've done it, but it's not even part of our regular purview. Outside, outside of that, ironically, Groton, Connecticut citizens call our PSAP at least once a day, sometimes three or four times a day.
We get calls from Groton, Connecticut.
Not through nine-one-one, but we get them all the time from Groton, Connecticut. I wonder, I don't know if they get the same from us, from our people, but.
Yeah.
Back when nine-one-one first came out, it was a dedicated phone line to a police station or a fire station. It was basically a way for people to easily remember the number instead of having to look at four, four, eight, five, 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 five. And it was a phone, dispatcher answered it, got the information, dispatched people. If you were to come and look at our dispatch consoles with the dispatchers work with it, to me, it looks like, it looks like the cockpit of seven forty-seven. And the technology involved and the complexity involved, it's, it's daunting, it's overwhelming. They'll have five, six, seven screens stacked on top of each other and all the stuff they're doing. And I know, I personally couldn't do the job and I don't know, it's hard to find people wanting to do the job. It really is because it's, it's a challenge in many ways. Next stage is med- emergency medical dispatch. This is when someone calls and they have a, a medical problem. This is, the dispatchers have to ascertain what the issue is and ultimately, if the situation's appropriate, give medical instruction from minor stuff up through and including CPR. Now, if you have one dispatcher and they're in the middle of medical dispatch, they have to get the troops rolling, they have to get the fire and the ambulance and the police officers going there while they're in the middle of this. And sometimes they can't do it all. I mean, our people are very good, I can't say enough about them, but this is, it's, it's a bit much. New technologies came on the past year, text and nine-one-one. What happens now, somebody is able to text to a PSAP and instead of having an oral communication, which happens relatively quickly, now it's, it's typing. So, depending on how the message sender were to do it, they could do it orally through like Siri or something like that, but our dispatchers have to respond with a keyboard. So, the length of a dis- or nine-one-one call through this technology could be tripled or quadruple the amount of time a normal nine-one-one call could take place. Dunstable Fire Department, next section. They have a different, whole different infrastructure as far as their communications than Groton Fire Department and it creates a lot of challenges for us because of the different paging systems that they use and because of their staff is all on call, they're looking for more service from our PSAP. And at certain times, we can't give it to them because they're looking for constant updates and they're all coming from either work or from home or for, they don't have people at the fire station and the infrastructure doesn't work the same as the Groton Fire Department's infrastructure. So, when you have one person doing that amongst everything else they're doing, sometimes they're unable to provide that service. When I, I put these last two on the bottom, they're no less important than, than the other ones. When an off, when a dispatcher, we call them communications officers, sometimes you refer to those officers, when they're working there for eight hours, they have no relief. No one else, unless you're certified in nine-one-one, can answer the nine-one-one line. And to train a police officer, a firefighter, to come in and give relief, that's like a five-week training course for nine-one-one and emergency medical dispatch. It's, that's not cost-effective to do something like that. So, sometimes our dispatches are by themselves, if they go to use the restroom, they literally have one ear on the nine, it's, it's right there physically, they would have to interrupt what they're doing to do that and they can't not answer the phone. And when the single dispatchers work and they're unable to leave the room to have a meal, take a meal break or walk outside and get a breath of fresh air, having two dispatchers there is, is, it's really the standard of care now anywhere that any PSAP is, anywhere. Just to be able to provide that level of humanness, human whatever, relief is, is something we should be doing for these people. One of the things I didn't put on there is having a second dispatcher really can limit the liability of a dispatcher mishandling a call when they're trying to juggle so many different things. Having a second dispatcher can really limit that. Can it make it perfect? No, because there's times you could use four dispatchers in there. And that's just as important as every other one of these things I was gonna say. All right. Last page, I just, I did, I put the reduced slides over on the last page. Basically, it's just a summary of everything I just went through. They can handle, fully handle multiple calls, support during the nine-one-one EMD calls. If you want to start dispatch, if they got a hot call coming in, it's amazing how they work together, especially after they've been working together for a period of time. One will be taking the information, the other one's listening kind of vicariously or over the council and they'll start people rolling. Hey, we have a problem at, you know, fifty-five Main Street. So, you know, and as more information comes, they can update things while the person stays on the phone with the call taker or the patient. And when they work like that after doing, it's, it's amazing. Be able to support each other and honestly, it's just, it's a, it's a, to me, it's a no-brainer. I know we have to put it out to everybody, but it benefits our town as much as it benefits anybody. And the other list of the, the rest of the benefits, ability to effectively meet Dunstable's protocols, maintain a regional agreement. Each dispatcher is able to provide relief for each other. And when we have a prisoner in the cell block, whether it's Dunstable's or ours, when his two dispatchers on, they take on those responsibilities instead of me hiring a police officer at overtime. So, that's pretty much, I know Steele is a proponent of it. I've spoken with the police chief in Dunstable, who we have a contact with. He is one hundred percent behind us, asking for this manpower.
Is Dunstable willing to increase their payment to the town if we add additional dispatches?
That sounds like a town manager, town administrator conversation.
I think we had that conversation. I'd be more than happy to add that.
Is there anything in your two thousand and twenty budget for addressing part of the dispatcher need?
Into two thousand and twenty, no.
Okay.
No. We're just trying to address this, this next budget.
We have ten months or so more to go as best we can.
Right.
With who we have, is what I'm hearing, I think.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think you can overemphasize the importance of the dispatchers. They are that initial person that you don't necessarily know what they look like. You could probably have all the dispatchers come in and, as you're going, uh, you might work for us, I'm not sure, but they're a critical lifeline in access to all of the emergency services in town. So, they really can't be, you know, really can't be understated how, how important that is to make sure that they have the resources both from a personnel but also an equipment standpoint so that they can more effectively do their job. The more effective they are, the quicker the information gets to the police officers or the firefighters, the quicker the service is to your front door.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
How often do we have one dispatcher on?
Ten shifts a week.
Ten shifts.
Ten shifts.
And can I follow up on that? I'm assuming that the seven midnight to seven AM shifts are, are the first candidates to have only one dispatcher?
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
But you're saying there's actually three more shifts that only have one?
That's correct. And one of the things I didn't bring up, this was kind of an anomaly, but we had, through attrition, we lost two full-time dispatchers in January, February time, February timeframe. And our dispatch staff between then until July, were each working close to thirty, thirty-five hours of overtime a week, ordered in. And our part-time dispatch, we have a part-time, a permanent part-time dispatcher and two, or three reliefs. They all have full-time jobs elsewhere. We can't order them in. If we order them in, they have to quit because they're not going to give up their full-time career for our part-time job. So that creates, they do a great job and they're a great multiplier, force multiplier for us, but they don't fill the need in crisis like that. Sam Welch, who was our current dispatch supervisor, said to me just today, last payroll was the first time he hasn't had to order people in since the beginning of the year. Which is for quality of life, we don't need these people burnt out either, we really don't.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm the liaison to the police department and coincidentally, I had set up an appointment with Mike last week before I saw this item on the agenda. But he gave me a tour of the dispatch center. And I, this is not my world at all, so this was totally new for me to see this. And it is, I think it's like an air traffic control position. It definitely is like being at the cockpit. There's an incredible array of stuff to be paying attention to and responding to. And, and it seems very reasonable to me that we shouldn't be moving toward staffing with those, all of the shifts with two people, at least incrementally.
One of the things I forgot to mention too, with the replacement, with replacing those two full-time dispatchers, it can be six months or more before you have someone to the level of competency that they work by themselves or work as a sole.
The certifications are incredible.
Weeks upon weeks. And after, without even the certification, John, just to get that, that competency to be able to do all those things at the same time, just takes time, muscle memory and repetition.
There was, if I could add, I know I saw in the news sometime, maybe four months ago, but someplace, not Groton, but where it was in the news that there was a family with a child having a medical emergency and they called nine one one and the kind of response they got was totally inadequate. It was someone saying, well, maybe you should try patting the child on the back or something. I mean, and there was, it made it into the news as to what a terrible response this was for an emergency. Which just speaks to, we need people who really know what they're doing.
The standard of care at this point, people expect to be able to get that kind of medical instruction and response when they call nine one one. And we, and we as a
We're required to.
We are. And it's something we should, might be.
So I have a couple of questions as well. I think you're on the right track, Mark, in asking whether Dunstable can
Pay more?
pony up a bit more. In two thousand and five, when the administrative tasks took three days, were we already regionalized with Dunstable?
We've been regionalized with Dunstable for
Since at least the eighties.
Yeah, forever.
And it's been varying degrees of regionalization. It was originally just police, fire was much more recent.
Okay.
And EMS is much more recent too, right?
Yes. And so those things have all been added on in as far as more responsible as for us.
Okay. In terms of the slide that talks about current staffing and shifts and that kind of thing?
Yes.
Does this account for some sort of vacation sick personal time? Or is that covered purely through overtime?
That's purely overtime, in orderance.
And then the other question I have, as you said, that there are difficulties logistically because Dunstables are all on-call. Is that something potentially that the Groton Fire Station can, you know, calls could be kind of routed to them to disseminate information? Or is that, I don't know what you guys are doing to Dunstable, you know, calling fifteen different, you know, I don't know what the process is.
So, so really it's a technology issue is what Dunstable Fire Department is running into. Their radio system that covers the town is woefully inadequate. So a vast majority of the information going out to the firefighter saying, hey, something's going on, has to be done via text. Because the range of their radios really doesn't get that far outside of, outside of Dunstable. So even in my station, I don't necessarily know what's happening in Dunstable because their radios aren't always strong enough to make it back to my station. The reason that it gets to the police station is because they're receiving from a different location and it's getting shipped in, it's getting piped in from a different location.
Okay.
So a lot of that, it's really technology-driven, but it's more work on the dispatchers because now they're typing in, you know, never mind, it's a, it's a call that's actually in Nashua, you can cancel.
Yeah.
You've notified Nashua rather than keying up on the radio and say, you know, the call's in Nashua, you can cancel.
Okay.
Obviously, one takes a lot more time and effort than the other.
And is it reasonable for, for us or you to tell Dunstable, like you simply need to upgrade this equipment for this, you know, relationship to continue?
So they've been trying for years and part of what their issue is that they've run into is inadequate locations in town to put the right equipment. So their radio equipment up until about a year ago was actually on private property, to my understanding. And that property transfer owners, it was sold, somebody else bought it and said, no, I don't want your stuff here. So that took away what already was kind of iffy and made it a little bit worse. And they don't have a good geographic location that they can put up a radio tower or do anything like that. So they're really in a, in a difficult location on this.
So it's not necessarily just a financial investment, it's logistically kind of
Correct.
I don't want to say impossible.
And that's true with both police and fire. And they've put some things into place to help mitigate those, but it really doesn't work with the call firefighters and their pagers and their ability to hear what's happening. It's really more focused on their trucks and the people that are on the trucks being able to communicate back. So they are making steps, but it's very slow, a very slow process because of those logistical issues.
Right. Wow. Other questions?
I have another one, just kind of more, kind of a comment question. You've been, you came from a bigger department, you've been around law enforcement a long time. Would you say, like a department like Groton, what makes us Groton? These guys are doing, you said the highway department, the electric department. And you don't see that in Boston or the city of Cambridge or on the state police where the dispatchers are, they have one role. There's many of them, if you go to the state police nine one one center. And the burnout there is incredible because it is what it is. But they're doing one thing, but they're doing it often. Here, they're doing many things and they're doing it often.
Good example would be Nashua is referred to sometimes when we're dealing with Dunstable and how they operate there. Nashua Fire Department, my understanding is they'll run three dispatchers at a time that just handle fire calls in one room and that's all they have to do. And they actually, their call volume just for that is less than what one of our dispatchers is handling for every period. You know, it fluctuates, sometimes it's higher. Police handle it separately and so to your point, John, is they're kind of, it's, they wear many hats and it's give you a warning.
If you're a citizen calling at nine one one and you need help, that's one thing. But be a police officer and be at the end of that radio and not get an answer. See how that goes away.
Or a firefighter.
The same, EMS technician in the same situation.
Yeah, I mean
You're a passenger to the police.
I mean, as an example, the dispatchers play a critical role in a, in a Mayday situation for us. So if one of our personnel becomes trapped, disoriented or injured while in a burning building, the dispatchers play a critical role in that rescue process. You know, it's obviously a very high risk and very low frequency event. But when it happens, the risk certainly, you know, is more than any of us can, can imagine. So, you know, it's not, it's not just, okay, I got the call out, my piece is done. They're a very integral part of the entire operation. From something as simple as a car stop to something as, as big as a major fire. For example, the Groton that burned. Dispatches were important pieces of that overall incident operation.
Yeah, wow. Thank you to all of them if they're watching.
Okay, thank you, Mike. You stay there.
That's one of those dog training.
The floor is mine.
Stay, chief, stay.
Can I ask one other, actually one other question? In terms of kind of salaries for dispatch, what are we?
Starting pay's around forty-eight thousand and ranges up to fifty-six.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you see less of a need for the part-time, the per diem relief or?
I would like to see a couple more. The big challenge with a part-time, per diem person, it takes, I was saying six months to train a full-time dispatcher. That's at full-time hours.
Right.
They're every day doing forty hours a week. Part-time, it's exponentially longer, a year plus to get someone, unless they already have experience or maybe in the public safety field, sometimes it takes a whole time off they used to use in radios or whatever. But it is helpful.
All right. What else?
Do we need firefighters?
So on this assignment, obviously, we're looking at the future staff needs. One thing that I, when I was trying to come up with, all right, what exactly I'm going to talk about is that a month from now, kind of our entire operation is going to change. So to come here tonight and say, well, this is what I'm going to need, you know, I need more people here, more people here, more people here. Well, I don't necessarily have a great answer to that. Can I make some guesses? Sure, I can make some guesses. But I think, you know, realistically, I'm looking at more towards the end of the year before we can say, all right, this is truly what we have on our hands right now. Now we can make some concrete efforts or plans moving forward as to what, what the fire department is going to need in the future. So in doing that, I said, all right, well, let's talk about really our, our challenge, which is a lot of pieces of the department. And specifically, we'll focus a little bit more on the recruitment and retention of on-call firefighters and kind of some of the efforts that we've put in. So just a quick overview, the Groton Fire Department works out of two stations. The center fire station, everybody's obviously very familiar with that. Currently, we have thirty-eight firefighters and EMTs, both career and call, assigned to that, to that building. What we run for apparatus, it's listed under that. So two engines, two ambulances, two brush trucks, a ladder truck and a tanker. In addition to that, there's also a couple of service vehicles and a couple of UTVs that operate out of that station. The Lost Lake Station, unfortunately, right now, we only have five firefighters that are left within that station. We're going to kind of get there, a little more into that conversation further along in this. But we staff an engine and a brush truck at that location. Previously, there were two engines and a brush truck there. That has recently been reduced down to one engine and brush truck just because of what we have available for.
Can I ask a question before you go off of Lost Lake? That five firefighters, you can't talk, I apologize. Does that include one of the members sitting up here at the table?
It does, so.
So it could go to four.
So it's very soon going to go to four.
And the firefighter counts are, that includes on-call and kind of all the different?
Yep, on-call and
That thirty-eight counts your nine full-time guys.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
That's what you were asking, right?
Yep.
Allison?
Yeah.
So obviously, we have, we have a fairly decent, decent number of people that are assigned to the center station. The involvement of Lost Lake, again, we'll get into that. You know, we're kind of reaching a critical point there. So historically, prior to two thousand and fourteen, a lot of the recruitment for the fire department was simply done by word of mouth. People on the department saying, oh, hey, Mike, I'm a firefighter, why don't you come be one? By the way, you want me to call that? Sure. And that's how a vast majority of, of the recruitment was, was done. It's a very ineffective way to, to recruit people. So we obviously keep word of mouth. That's something that just happens regardless. But when I arrived in the second half of two thousand and fourteen, we started doing a lot more with recruitment, actively going out into the community, looking for people that are interested in joining the fire department. So we've used social media in various, at various times in order to get people interested in the fire department and what we do. Through our social media, most recently, we did a video and it has a lot of the firefighters on it. And they talk about what brought them into the fire service, what they enjoy most about it. And, you know, it's a great video, I think it's on the Groton channel. I think you can get to it right off of that. So we've, we've engaged in that social media. We've also gone to kind of some old-school stuff. We mail postcards to every mailing address in town. We've done that on two different occasions. Certainly has a cost every time we do that. But it saturates the community. If there's people out there, hopefully between social media and those postcards, we identify those folks and hopefully get them a little bit interested in the fire department in the hopes that we could at least get them to attend one of our informational sessions, which we've had three informational sessions. And as you can see, first session, we actually got twelve attendees. Three people from that decided, hey, you know what, this is something I want to do. And all of them have come onto the department and has since moved out of town. So none of them are, are still here. Two thousand and eighteen, we only had three people show up to that informational session. We had one applicant and that person is still in fact with us. Most recently, in June of, of this year, we have only twelve attendees and thus far, we have eight applicants. So they haven't gone through, or not all of them have gone through their interview process. Not all of them have gone through the physical. We send every employee to occupational health to get a, to get a physical. Make sure there's no underlying medical conditions that would really prevent them from being a firefighter. And not only does it help identify medical conditions that prevent them from being a firefighter, in two thousand, it was either two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and sixteen, they did tests on somebody and said, hey, this is not right. You need to see your doctor. And without going into detail, that person had a life-threatening illness that they found because they applied to the fire department and we sent them for a physical. Which obviously, that, that was huge. And that person was, couldn't come onto the fire department because it significantly impacted their ability to, to be a firefighter. So that's a, you know, that's an important piece, those informational sessions. And we'll see, go ahead, John.
No, there is also a fitness test, right? Physical fitness test.
That's part of that.
Is that combined?
Yeah, that's all part of it, yep.
Steele, one other question. Where you say there are three out of town and five applicants. What, I mean, I, I think of an on-call firefighter as being someone in our community. What does that mean that there are three from out of town?
Still, with that?
A budding town?
Yeah, so we actually, two years ago, we changed our criteria from simply saying you have to live within the border to saying if you are within ten minutes of normal driving time. So, you know, if MapQuest says that we can be to your house in ten minutes, then you're eligible to be on the department. So when you think about air as a great example, you can live on the Groton town line and you're easily within ten minutes of, of the station. So that's what two of them are. They're in air, but they're just barely over the town line. And the third one of those lives further away, but his occupation is here in town and the possibility exists that he can leave during work hours in order to help, which is obviously a unique situation because he otherwise wouldn't be eligible to, to come on with us. But this, I think, requires some creative thinking in order to, to see if that's a benefit to, to the community.
Thank you.
And honestly, one of our most, one of our newest and also most effective recruiting tools is actually the girl lawn sign. We've had a lot of people that really have been interested just based off that, that lawn sign. So out of the applicants that I previously listed, the eight applicants, I think at least half of them said, well, I saw the lawn sign, so then I went and did a little more research or I called the station. So oddly enough, there is no tech around that, it's just put a lawn sign out. Was, was very, very effective. So at this point, with those eight applicants, let me just make sure, you know what, I'm not going to toggle that.
Go on to the next slide then?
Yeah, you just go on to the next slide. Because otherwise, I'm going to go like four slides and I'm going to come back and I'm going to go three slides and that would work. So in addition, we've been to the high school on three different occasions in order to try and recruit the junior and senior classes to see if they're interested in becoming firefighters. That has yielded no applicants. So, you know, certainly, it was something that was well-intended. However, you know, we're not really seeing anything for a result from, from going into the high school. Vast majority of kids, they're going away to college. So, you know, a year after they graduate, they're out of town and it's really not something that you can take somebody in and say, all right, well, we know you're leaving in a year, but we'll get you trained, they're not going to get you trained before they leave. And there's a certain cost to training and physicals and all that, which I have a little bit later on. We've had a great partner in the, in the Groton Herald over the years. Uh, we've had a great partner in the, in the Groton Herald over the years, um, specifically, uh, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, we had articles that were purely based on, uh, the need for recruitment and retention. Uh, since then, uh, we've worked on multiple other articles that aren't necessarily geared directly towards that. Um, however, Connie and Russ have been great about kind of putting a little plug in, uh, here and there on articles about us getting, or needing more on-call firefighters and EMTs. Uh, our initial sign board, uh, we had one down in West Groton for a couple of years. Uh, we had a recruit committee, uh, that we had started in two thousand sixteen, who really helped identify a lot of these things, such as going to the high school, um, the use of social media, the engagement with the Groton Herald, um, and other, other aspects of it. Um, John, you were actually on that committee.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have a street banner that goes up, uh, several times during the year across Main Street. Uh, we definitely had a few people who said, "Hey, I'm interested in becoming a call firefighter." Um, unfortunately, a lot of those are saying, "Oh, well, I live in New Hampshire, is that a problem? A little far away," um, but, um, it certainly gets at least people thinking. Uh, and then we do recruiting at Groton Fest and the Labor Day muster and other events in town, where we're able to set up a, um, a table or something to extend. In addition to all that recruiting, we started a, um, explorer program in October of two thousand fifteen. So, the explorer program is meant to get kids in the eighth through twelfth grades involved in the fire department, learn about what we do as firefighters and EMTs, in the hopes that we kind of, uh, spark a little bit of interest, uh, to bring them in when they turn eighteen and say, "Hey, I wanna join the fire department." Uh, to date, we have two people who have joined the fire department out of that program, and should be having the third one, uh, later this year. Uh, we actually just, we're waiting for her to turn eighteen, and then we can start the training process. Uh, but, it has shown some success. Matt Pasani, who was one of the firefighters, has done a phenomenal job running that program, and, uh, these kids can really do a lot of the aspects of the, of the job, uh, you know, even though they might be fourteen years old, they understand what we do, why we do it, and how we do it, which is critically important, um, if they decide that they wanna do that later in life. Um, and now, we've covered that, let's go on to the next one. So, I gotta talk about department policy a little bit. So, in order to be on the fire department, we do have requirements, uh, ongoing requirements in order to, um, stay on the fire department, and it's really based on participation, because if somebody isn't around and they don't know the equipment, the community, or what we do, um, they're a liability, not an asset to us. Um, so, we do place standards, uh, minimum standards, um, you know, and again, these are, these are minimal standards. Uh, so, as an example, we require folks to participate in fifty percent of our, uh, department trainings. So, if you're a firefighter, twelve, you're, if you're an EMT, fifteen, or if you're a firefighter, EMT, twenty. There's numerous trainings that overlap, hence the reason it's not twelve plus fifteen. Um, and obviously, we encourage people to do more than that. Um, the more you train, the more mission-ready you are when, when that time comes. Something new for us, uh, OSHA training, um, was put into place in, in February of this year. Uh, prior to that, um, there wasn't specific OSHA training that we had to do. This has added an immense amount of training to the plate for everybody, um, and this training's mandatory, so, they have to, um, participate in it, and, uh, unfortunately, it has, and will continue to take away a little bit from our mission-critical training, uh, that, that we do, um, have to run on a yearly basis. Uh, so, that's one of our, our challenges that we run into. Uh, firefighters are responsible or are required to come to fifteen percent of fire calls, and this is based on, uh, the nighttime hours, um, so, fifteen percent of calls that occur overnight. Uh, EMTs, to this point, are required to do, uh, forty-eight ambulance shifts, uh, per year. So, over the years, this has also changed, as the availability of our call department has changed, policy has changed in order to, uh, decrease those requirements. Um, so, if you go back to two thousand ten, up to two thousand ten, um, you can see that fifty percent of training was still the standard there, but you're looking at thirty, uh, percent of the calls and ninety-six EMS shifts. So, uh, significantly higher commitment, um, in order to, uh, stay on the department. Um, between two thousand ten and two thousand fourteen, you can see the, the numbers there, uh, fifteen percent of trainings went into play then, and ambulance shifts have been decreased to seventy-two. Um, so, as our, the availability of our call firefighters, uh, decreases, over the years, we've decreased what their commitment is, uh, or what they're required to do, which creates holes and gaps, um, without changing it. What'd you say, Lee Do?
No, no, I'm sorry.
I thought you went, "Like me."
Um, in terms of the, so, fifteen percent of fire calls between six PM and six AM, roughly, how many of those are there a year?
Can I, can I address that? Because that, that was gonna be my, my question, because I don't, I want people...
My question.
I'm stealing it, but, people, when, when we use the number of thirty-eight firefighters, that includes the full-time firefighters, so, let's take them out, what do we have?
So, you take out, you take nine away from that, or eight away from that?
Eight, so, let's say thirty, thirty firefighters. I want the people in town to get the right idea about those thirty firefighters. Of those thirty firefighters, they're required to make fifty percent of those trainings, correct?
Yep.
Of those thirty call firefighters, there, now, you just told us how the, the requirements have been reduced because of the problem of recruiting and retaining call firefighters. Of those thirty call firefighters, they're only, they're required to make fifteen percent of those runs, those calls, between six P to six AM. Of those thirty firefighters, I hope I'm not speaking out of school, how many of those make those numbers? Is it thirty, is it twenty-five? I know the number, that's why I'm asking this.
Yeah, so, I mean, it, it depends, you know, obviously, John, you know that we do a lot of this stuff on a quarterly basis, and people have things that, that go on. Um, so, you know, it, it varies a lot.
Yeah.
Um, but, as of last fall, we were about fifty percent of the department that was not able to make those requirements. That has gotten better, um, through, uh, some people who departed because they've moved out of town, or whatever the case may be. Um, so, of those thirty, right now, we're probably looking at, um, you know, twenty-five, or maybe a little bit less that, that aren't, uh, or that are making those minimum requirements.
In the last quarters. Now, if you were to... I just want people to get, to get, when we say thirty or thirty, that, that's, that's not a whole, a real person, it's a call person that's only required to make fifty percent of the trainings and fifteen percent of the calls.
Yep.
So, it's not, it's, it's not thirty, sometimes it's even lower than that, I think in two thousand eighteen, it was somewhere around five.
Mm-hmm.
Five, five.
Yeah, we're looking at, when you, when you look at, you know, the number of calls that occur, um, and how many people show up to the calls, averaging over the course of the year, that average is probably, it, it varies between three and five people, so, you're right on in that. Um, that, that it's really, it's not thirty, it's three, it's four, it's five.
But to get those three, we had to have a five or a twenty, which I think is really high. We had to have thirty on-call people.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, Steel, in terms of, back to the, the fifteen percent of fire calls, like with the forty-eight ambulance shifts, I look at that and I say, "Oh, that's roughly one a week." So, fifteen percent of fire calls, I mean, are there, is there a fire call every night? Is it once a week, tw- I mean...
So, some nights, you can have three calls in one night.
Okay.
It all depends on, on what's going on. So, over the course of the year, that fifteen percent, um, as it pertains to, uh, folks that are just firefighters, um, you're looking at about twenty to twenty-five calls that they're required to make their minimum.
So, once every couple of weeks?
And, and I'll tell you that somebody that only comes to twenty or twenty-five calls over the course of a year, really isn't that, uh, unfortunately, isn't that practiced in what they're doing, and I think John will back me up on that, because, um, he certainly worked with, with folks that did the bare minimum or, or less.
Less.
Um, and they're just not familiar with, with what they're doing, till they become inefficient, um, and honestly, they can become dangerous to, to, uh, the overall operations sometimes.
And the cost for a call firefighter on average, I mean, I know myself, I made twenty-eight hundred dollars taxed in two thousand and eighteen, divide that by your hours, that tells you how many runs I was on and those off-hours, running out at one, two, three, four in the morning in snow, snow, scraping your truck up, running out the door, running into your truck, running up to the fire station, getting in the truck, waiting for a second person to come, all of this, I find amazing that people in town don't actually know. And we're fixing this, we started to fix it, that's a good thing, we're trying to fix dispatches, we're fixing this. But people in town are, are, you're home in bed, the tone goes off, and of those thirty call firefighters, maybe one, two, three, four, two or three, maybe getting out of their cars, their beds, running to their car or truck, cleaning the snow off, driving up to the center station, getting in a truck, waiting for the next person or two, so they can roll, and then one, maybe one to two are going to Lost Lake, if that at all. In the meantime, people are waiting for that help. It's, we're fixing it, the, the twenty-four hour coverage is really gonna fix it, help a lot, but, I just want people, when, when I, when I see that number thirty-eight, it just rubs me the wrong way, because it's, it's a percentage of thirty-eight, which is, we use the numbers, fifty percent of fifteen.
Yep. Yeah, it certainly is, is lower than that.
Sorry.
So, we can go on to, to training for, uh, the new firefighters. Um, so, we have a few different options for, uh, training new firefighters. Uh, and really, we're gonna focus a little bit more on the fire side, because, um, you know, we certainly have a critical need there, and as we get further along, again, I'm gonna talk about Lost Lake and why we have such a critical need, uh, for firefighters. So, one of our options is that we run our own, uh, recruit training, um, within, within the department. Uh, so, this training is conducted by Groton Fire Department personnel. Um, Lieutenant Shute typically, uh, leads up that training, he's been doing, um, this type of recruit training for the better part of fifteen years, um, so, it's not something that he just took on and said, "Sure, I'll teach some people how to fight," but, he's been doing it for a long time. Uh, we need six to eight applicants in order to run one of these trainings, because it becomes very ineffective, uh, to run a training with, with less than six, because you need partners in order to do certain things, uh, and if there's not somebody to partner up with, it just slows the training down, um, which, uh, really can only be overcome by, I mean, hiring somebody to be their partner for, you know, a day or two days in order to accomplish certain objectives. We train people to the firefighter one standard, so, uh, the National Fire Protection Association, um, has two levels of firefighter, firefighter one and firefighter two. Uh, we train to that lower level, and it gets them the basics of what they need in order to operate as a firefighter on the fire ground. Um, there's a significant amount of prep time that goes into this, so, our program runs about a hundred hours. Uh, prior to that program actually occurring, we're putting about a hundred hours into development of the program to make sure we're hitting everything that we need to. Uh, so, there's a huge amount of effort that has to get laid down in front of the program, um, ever, um, taking off. Our second option for training is, uh, the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy. Uh, this program is kind of the gold standard in the state, it brings people up to, uh, the firefighter level one and level two standard, as well as the hazardous materials, um, operations standard that NFA recognizes. The advantage to this is we can send as few as one person to this program at a time. Uh, there is no cost to go to the fire academy, apart from the textbooks, which cost seventy-five dollars, and whatever we need to do in order to outfit them to go, which we need to do that regardless. Um, the problem is, that class only runs a couple times a year down the stove. The current class that's starting in a few weeks is running in Lester. To drive from Groton to Lester three times a week in order to take a class really is probably not something that most people are gonna swallow. Um, but that's our gold standard.
But we pay them a salary for that hundred and sixty hours, is that correct? That they're at the academy?
The call fire, oh, I'm sorry, we're ahead, the call firefighters, no.
No.
Full-time guys, yes, correct?
No.
Hundred and, yeah, it's two forty. Is that the old version? We found an error, it's two forty is the Mass Fire Academy number.
The one on the screen, it's just...
The one that's on the screen.
Right, but are they paid for that time?
The one in our package is old, so, two hundred and forty hours.
I, I found the mistake today, so that's why, that's why I found it.
Do we pay them a salary while they're there or not?
Uh, so, no, we don't.
Okay.
No, we're the full-timers.
Right, I'm, I'm afraid.
So, they, the salaried members of the department?
We pay their salary while they're at the academy.
And they're required to at the academy?
Correct.
For the full-time?
But the call people, we do not pay, but they're also required to go?
So, they're required to do one training or, one, um, training or the other one, um, and then we're gonna get into another one, actually, on the, on the next slide here.
Okay.
Um, so, no, they aren't, uh, they aren't paid hour for hour, um, for their time, um, at the academy. We have put in for a grant that will actually, uh, the federal government will pay for them to go, so, they will, they will get paid in order to go to the academy, it won't cost the town of Groton any money, because FEMA would be paying for, for that, as well as their new gear, their physical, um, really everything, which is listed two pages from now, um, and hopefully, that's something that we can obtain, we're not gonna know for a few more months, um, and continually reapply for every year and bring it in. Uh, we're limited how many people we can do that with, though, so, I think that we put in for four, and that's kind of where our max is, um, but they'll get paid for the entire two hundred and forty hours of the, of the program, um, so, hopefully, we're successful, but again, we're not gonna know for a few more months, if that's even something that's, um, a full possibility. Uh, Mark, just skip ahead a couple slides, and we might as well just jump on this real quick, um, before we go back. Uh, so, to outfit a new firefighter, you're looking at just over seven thousand dollars. Now, some stuff is reusable, pagers, radios, uh, so, that cost comes down, but obviously, there's still a cost that goes to that, the maintenance of it, um, and that initial purchase cost. If two people, um, you know, shared a pager and, and radio setup, uh, obviously, cut that number in half, and, and that's what it becomes. Uh, but if we have to outfit somebody from, from top to bottom, um, it's a little over seven thousand dollars, um, and that's without the training, uh, that goes along with it, that's purely from an equipment standpoint, um, and the, and the physical. Uh, we'll go back one. Uh, so, our last option for training new firefighters is the auxiliary program. The auxiliary program, um, it's, it's intended to be a self-paced learning for firefighters in order to bring them up to that firefighter level one. Uh, it is hugely ineff- inefficient in the use of personnel to teach it, because you may be teaching, uh, you know, John, module one today, Allison, you're actually on module three, um, but next week, John's gonna be on module three, so, um, you can certainly run into instances where you're going to be investing a ton of time, um, and a ton of money into teaching the same class in very short succession. Uh, you know, John may say, "Hey, you know what? I'm gonna come five days a week and get through this program," and Allison, you may say, "Well, I can come, you know, for two hours, once a week." Uh, obviously, that timeframe is, is, um, going to dictate how long it takes. So, that's why it can take as little as five months, or it can take up to two years to get that, that training. Uh, so, while it's a great concept, um, there certainly is some major pitfalls to this auxiliary program, especially for those that take a little bit longer, had they lost foundational information by the end of the program, um, from the first few weeks that they were, that they were operating. Uh, we can go ahead too, 'cause we already covered that one. So, just a little bit more background information on, on membership. If you see in two thousand five, we had sixty-nine personnel, and that's including call and full-time. Um, two thousand ten, obviously, you guys can read those numbers, um, there's been a steady decrease in the number of, of call firefighters that are available. Um, in kind of that same timeframe, since two thousand three, the fire department has hired, um, a hundred and thirty people, and has lost a hundred and thirty people for various reasons, whether it's, um, their inability to commit to... Whether it's their inability to commit to the time requirements, they can't do the training. Sometimes people don't know their claustrophobic until they put the gear on. Becky and Allison, you guys have put that on. It's a different experience.
Have we, when you say a hundred and thirty members, does that mean trained as well? So the same training expense has gone into that?
So they may have not completed the training, so they came in, get partway through the training, went, uh-uh, this is not for me. That's actually very common. In a recruit class, typically, we lose about fifty percent of the people because they realize that, hey, you know what, there's a little bit more to this than I expected.
Yeah.
So of those eight people that I'm talking about, realistically, we're doing well if we get four, we're doing great if we have five. And it's unheard of to have eight by the time the program finishes up or at least within that first year, the program and initial probationary time. So obviously, there's a lot of effort, there's a lot of money that goes into all these efforts. And, you know, we have a great group of personnel that wants to train people, they wanna teach people, but they're doing the same thing over and over. And that's a challenge. You know, at some point, people get to the point where they say, I just did this for four people, they're not even here anymore, now I'm doing four more. So they need to step back from that for a little bit before they reengage. But when they step back for a little bit, it creates a hole that I then have to figure out how to fill in.
So we've lost fifty percent of the call department in fifteen years?
And that's really a national trend. You know, you look at all over the country, they're running into the same challenges. Notably, North Carolina and Maine are the two hardest hit in the country. They've lost over fifty percent of their call and volunteer firefighters. I think in Maine, it's within the last ten years. I think in North Carolina, I think it's within the last five. So it's a big, big deal and it's not a local issue. This is a national issue to the point where it's getting higher and higher in FEMA as really a crisis because what's gonna happen in these truly rural areas is what they keep bringing up.
So it's interesting, you said in the previous slide, since two thousand and fourteen, the way the department filled was through word of mouth, which makes sense because you had such a, you had a lot more call firefighters, you didn't have as much of a need. In the last five years, you had that need, which means you've had to step up your recruiting and it's not producing the numbers that you need to maintain the call force that we used to have back in two thousand and five.
Yeah, so I mean, in a typical year, at least the last couple of years, I should say, you know, we've lost, I think, eleven people last year, we gained six. So we're simply not keeping up with the attrition. And the attrition can really come from a lot of different things, it's a great segue.
I did that on purpose.
Oh, I wasn't there, it was like we planned it.
I had no idea what I was saying.
So additional time requirements. I talked about OSHA requirements. That's a huge piece of what folks are having to do in training and it's all mandatory. It's not come to fifty percent of those. It's, yes, you have to come to all of those and it takes away from a lot of the other stuff. We need people to continually develop new skills. The fire service has changed significantly in twenty years. You know, it used to be, if you go back thirty or forty years ago, what did the fire service do? They went to fires. Now, we're dealing with hazardous materials, we're dealing with medical emergencies, car accidents. Really, if there's nobody else to fix something that's going wrong, they turn to the fire department and say, hey, can you guys deal with this? Eh, we'll try it. And it might be something as simple as a broken pipe in a house. Somebody doesn't really think about that as an emergency, but it truly is. It's a threat to their property and it can be a threat to their life if it does something like pour out their gas furnace. So that's, you know, that is an emergency and that's one of those things that one day, the fire service went, eh, we can try it. And it became part of what we do is stop that major water leak that occurs within houses. And we've learned different techniques to reduce that damage from something as simple as a water leak. So, and so society has also changed over the course of the years. People are much more involved in their families and what they do. They're coaching soccer, they're going to, you know, baseball games, different vacations. So family life is more involved and that's one of our more common issues that we run into is that folks are doing stuff with their family and they're not able to do stuff there at the fire department. The demographics of the community, what people do for work. If you go back thirty years ago, most people worked with their hands. They repaired stuff, they built stuff, whatever the case may be, so firefighting was a natural fit. Folks that aren't used to working with their hands, they have a difficult time kind of taking on these complex skills that we have to perform on a regular basis. And sometimes that kind of is intimidating for them to say, well, yeah, I don't really work with my hands that much and now we're asking them to do it in the heat, in the dark, in just horrible conditions. And it certainly becomes a stressor for them. And then generational differences. You know, different generations work great about doing different things and, you know, this kind of ties in with the family life piece is that the generations of folks really dictates a lot of what they're able to do with the fire department. So our future challenges, we obviously need a sufficient number of firefighters and EMTs in order to protect the community. And we also need to operate in a position where we can provide safety to our own personnel. Obviously, we can't send firefighters into a situation where knowingly endangering them more than they already are doing the basic job. Experience, this is a huge issue. And a great example of this is with John stepping away from the Lost Lake Fire Station, there's a certain amount of experience that gets lost with that. And it's hard to get all that information passed on. His time actually going to fires, going to incidents, learning the community, that gets lost when he leaves. Sure, you can say, all right, you know, Mike, here's how this works. And hopefully, Mike grasps most of it, but he's never actually seen it firsthand. So as we lose our more experienced people, really, it's a multiplier in what we lose for service from the town. It's not a one-for-one. Somebody with much more experience has been around, it's really like losing two or three newer people on the department. And that's a huge, huge issue for us. New recruits start at a foundational level. They know the basics of fighting fire, but they don't necessarily understand yet how this all fits together in a true emergency. Somebody fresh out of the academy, yes, they can use a hose, they can put up a ladder, they can cut a car park, no problem. But applying that in a real-life situation with people screaming in, you know, a raging snowstorm is a whole different animal. So, you know, certainly, it increases their stress. And the more you increase their stress, the higher the risk of failure of their performance or decreasing performance can occur there. So it realistically takes us, and John, I would invite you to argue with me on this one, but it takes two years of active service to really gain experience to be confident on the fire ground. I don't know if you agree with that or you wanna say it's more or less, but that's, in my experience, has been true.
It's all right. I'm a quick study though. You're only two, year, ten months.
You're like a gold star plan, okay. And we have to remember, again, our experienced firefighters are the ones that train our new ones. As we lose all our experienced firefighters, a lot more leaves to them than just a person. As an example, we, and this is on the EMS side, we just lost somebody who retired with thirty-five years of experience last week. That's a big deal. That person took almost three hundred AMG shifts a year. That just went away in a retirement like that. So obviously, that's a big deal. And there's obviously a lot of experience that goes with that thirty-five years at two hundred, three hundred shifts a year. So some of our future, some of our pitfalls and also our solutions, you know, we have to identify them. You know, hiring additional call firefighters. I've talked a lot about call firefighters. It's very easy to say, well, we need more firefighters, we need more call firefighters. It's easy to say that, it's very hard to actually pull that off. It is a low cost to the community. It is a high risk, though, in that we have this significant turnover that continues. We can't control people and their personal lives. And, you know, personal lives really dictate their availability to give back to the community and give back to the fire department. Hiring per diem. And what I mean by this is hiring people from other towns, other communities, to come in and be firefighters. It's a very short-term solution, there's a massive turnover rate that goes with that. The cost is moderate, but it has a very volatile risk because you're taking a whole bunch of different cultures, jamming them all together and hoping that it works okay. So sometimes that works, more often than not, however, that creates major conflict and it's not something that I think that I would be comfortable introducing into our department. And then obviously, the last choice is add additional career staff. Obviously, it needs to fit within the budget priorities of the community. It is certainly also the highest cost, but it's the lowest risk. You know, at the end of the day, this is what you get. You get a person for forty-two hours a week and that means this. So those are kind of the, you know, looking to the future, what are our solutions? Those are generally the three big ones in order to mitigate this problem. As we look at our call volume, it continues to increase. This year, as of last week, we were just under five percent higher than we were the previous year. Previous year, at this same time, did I write it down anywhere? We were, so to date last, last week, this year is twenty-one percent higher than where we were in two thousand and seventeen, which is also four point seven nine percent higher than where we were this time last year. So we continue to, we continue to grow in terms of emergency calls. Now, can this change? Absolutely, we could get into a mild winter and then November, December are relatively slow and that number pulls back. But the way we've been running this year, I'm not even sure a warm November and December is going to have that effect. So our next big challenge is the Lost Lake Station. So the Lost Lake Station right now is at five people. When John leaves, we're down to four people. And of those, one person has stated that they're probably not going to be living in town a tremendously, a tremendous longer time. So that's another challenge. And how do we fill those gaps? So I'm happy to report that we do have multiple applicants from Lost Lake, the Lost Lake neighborhood. However, where we run into issues is how we train them, how do we make sure that they're safe the first time that they go on a real emergency call? There's an immense amount of liability in that. If we take, you know, four brand-new firefighters, throw them on a fire truck and they do something wrong, whether it's they crash the fire truck or they go to a fire and they do something completely ill-advised and get injured or killed, what's the liability on the department and the community at that point? So how do we keep them safe and get them up to that level? Some people have said, you know, well, we can just take people from the center station and move them to the Lost Lake Station and that fixes the problem. All it does really is it creates a problem at the center station because we've taken the experience from there, we've shifted it and created more gaps here. So, you know, is the Lost Lake Station important to the community? The answer is, of course, yes. It's a very, a very high-hazard neighborhood when it comes to fires. Small roads, houses close together and close proximity to the woods is a recipe for a real major fire. So we need to keep in mind that allowing that station to reach a failure point to where we need to close it, similar to what we did in West Gotten, really is bad for the community as a whole. It's bad for every citizen of this town, whether you live at the end of Townsend Road or, you know, you live on Wiley Road, it's a really big deal. So we have to continue to recruit and hopefully find firefighters that are willing to do that, to respond to that station. If we can't do that, then we have to look at alternatives in order to keep that station open. So that's more of an FYI on that.
Well, while you're talking about, you mentioned West Gotten.
Yep.
We closed it two years ago?
Yeah.
What do we need to do with the building, what's the plan?
So right now, it's utilized for storage for both the senior center while that's being built and we actually have quite a bit of equipment down there. So we're kind of using it as an annex. That said, the building is starting to fall into disrepair. It looks like either, we're not sure if it's a current active leak or if it was a prior leak when we have ice dams years ago, but there is a significant, bold issue that is developing. So, you know, at some point in the near future, we have to decide what we're doing with that building. You know, there's been different concepts of what to do to make it the emergency management building. Again, we're gonna have to invest a good bit of money, I think, at this point into renovating that building. Does the town sell it, does the town keep it as somebody had suggested a, I don't wanna say a historic building, because really, the historic folks are over there, but almost like a museum-type building. You know, I think there's a lot of different options, but we're gonna have to make a decision sooner rather than later. And by that, I really mean, within the next year, we have to decide, one way or another, what's happening with that building.
Let me ask you this, how do you wanna go about making that decision? Is this a decision that the fire department should make and make a recommendation to the board? Should the selectmen assign a couple of members of the board to work with you and me to come up with a decision? I'm never gonna use the word task force again, so I'm not gonna say establish a task force to look at the future of West Gotten, but we need to, do you need help in making that decision?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think that part of what we have to consider is that at some point, the river is going to flood. West Gotten is going to be on an island and we need to have some sort of facility on the other side in order to protect the citizens of West Gotten when that occurs. But I think that assigning a board member or two to work with you and I on this would be appropriate at this point. We're not gonna have a great grasp of where we are until the senior center moves their storage out of there.
That's hopefully gonna be the next, you know, year.
Hopefully.
Joking, joking.
But we have to make a decision because if we do nothing, then the building's just gonna continue to fall into disrepair. The building is in decent shape, so I think it would be, you know, a bad thing to just let it go.
Oh, I agree. I don't think we should, so I'd like to, maybe the board can put this on a future agenda to assign a couple of members to work with Steele and I to figure out what's running.
I had to put one that flew in because somebody was looking at the presentation and said, we don't have anything that flies in, so I put the last one. So the Gotten Fire Department will continue to provide the best possible service to the community. We need to be open to the fact, however, that times will change and the department will need to change in order to meet these future challenges. That said, I really can't say enough about our call department and how good of a job they do. And I certainly urge not only the members of the board, but citizens, if they see members of the fire department, whether call or full-time, to thank them for what they do. They really are your lifeline in the middle of the night and they sacrifice a lot in order to keep the community safe.
Excellent presentation for both of you guys.
I have a question for you, Steele, and there may not be a good answer, but obviously, you know, as a resident, I have no medical background. Having gone into a burning building with you once, even if I weren't wearing crackers boots... boots, not, not signing up to do that again. What can I do? I mean, is there anything that people can do, other than kind of talk about call firefighters and the need, and, and be appreciative? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, that's the, you know, that word of mouth, getting the information out that, that, hey, we need people, is important. We still run into people, even with all these efforts for recruitment that we've done, that say, "Oh, you guys have a call fire department? You live in town?" "I lived here for ten years." Yeah, we do. So, so continually getting the word out that we, that we need people is, is important. And we're gonna try to, you know, move along with this auxiliary program, or to make, open up other opportunities for people who say, you know what, I'm not going into a burning building, or I'm not going to hold pressure on somebody's cut on their arm, because that's not my thing, but there may be other opportunities to participate in that auxiliary role. What's that?
I could do your filing.
Yeah, right.
You need an Excel spreadsheet, I can help with that.
We could use that. That's an important piece too.
Other questions?
I did have one question, when you said you've gone to the high school. What about the vocational schools?
So we haven't gone to the vocational schools, because we're using our on-duty staff, so we can't necessarily...
That's kind of far away.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to send them, send them over to Westford to do that.
What I wondered was, is there a, a program, and I don't know the answer to this, at either Neshobatech or, or the Greater Lowell, that trains young people for work that is sort of related?
It's a phenomenal question that I don't know the answer to. Yeah, I don't know if they have anything like that. I, I know it wouldn't be a fire program, but it probably would be something that they could do, like an EMT program, through those vocational schools.
Right, because some, there's some medical type track, training, and I think there's also like car mechanics, which might have, you know, trucks, fire trucks. There might be some interest. At least, making sure that they have, I don't know, posters or contact information over there. I can understand that you can't send people off during the day, because it's kind of far away.
No, it's, it's a good point.
Those volunteers need to be eighteen, right?
Correct, yeah. In order to be a firefighter, you do have to be eighteen or empty. You have to be eighteen years of age, but again, that explore program can bring kids in as, as early as the eighth grade.
Is that fourteen?
Yeah, it's, it's fourteen, it used to be an actual age, and now it's based on your grade, not your age.
So, you know, I think both chiefs did a nice job presenting the issues, given us a lot to think about as we go into budget season, and how we want to address some of these things. I think with regards to the police department, you know, once we have the full staffing, great. With regards to the fire department, let's see how twenty-four-seven goes, future recruiting efforts, there's not gonna be a need hopefully to hire another five guys, firefighters anytime soon. The critical need is dispatch, and we have to explore ways to figure out how to address that, I think. Would you agree with that, John? Because you've been working with us on, on this issue.
Yeah, I agree. We're getting to the point where the dispatch situation, I think, is critical.
If anybody would like to come and just, come and tour the dispatch center, just to, even if it's a quiet period, you come in, it's, it can be overwhelming, or you see what they're up against. Please reach out.
And the yacht sign thing, I called, and they came down and killed mosquitoes.
The, the yacht sign?
Yeah, I called the yacht sign, I called the yacht sign, and it was mosquitoes. See them everywhere.
Thank you very much Steele, thank you very much Michael.
Thank you guys.
Great presentation, good job. So you have on the agenda next, the business of discussion of the select board email address. I believe select board member Pine brought that up, so I will turn that over to her.
Right, so the first thing I'm gonna say about this is that if we were to make any changes, it, it doesn't, we have a policy about the select board email address, and I, I think that we shouldn't be making a policy change tonight, when there's only four of us here, and I also think we have a policy that says we're supposed to discuss things at least once, and then vote at another meeting anyway. But so, I don't, I'm not asking or suggesting that we vote on anything tonight, but I would like to share some thoughts about this.
Before we jump in Becky with the ideas, Mark, can you just give us a thirty-second, like, there's one email address that comes in, it goes to you?
Yep, what happens, I opened up the select board page for you to show you what happens. On the select board page, it says, please note that emails that go are received by the town manager and executive assistant for distribution and action. As you know, what we do is when we get something in, I forward all the emails to the board right away. If there's a response that needs to be done, I let the board know that we're gonna plan on making a response, and, and it works very efficiently. People go to one address for that. And then also on the page, and Allison, John, and Josh, you gotta get the pictures taken, I'm glad John and Becky did that, but we have your individual email addresses on the page as well, so if somebody wants to reach out to an individual select board member, they have that right, they have a way to do that here. So, the page I think is pretty clear on how things happen within the, within the office when they send an email to, to the board. So anyway, I want to put that up there for you.
Right, so we did talk about the select board at Town of Groton email address once prior, more than a year ago, I think. And I think that there are some aspects of this that make it less than ideal as our main way for, for taxpayers to get in touch with us. One is that if, if someone sends an email to us at that address, we all get that same email, we are not allowed to reply all, because it would be an open meeting law violation. And even individually replying has some risk of it then being shared by the sender with other members of the board. So, there were some pitfalls with, we can receive information, but there's pitfalls with us replying to that address. And, and I think that we may all understand that, but I don't think that the normal taxpayer citizen does, and may be wondering why they get a response, even though it says that the town manager will read it and respond perhaps. What, if they really wanted to get in touch with us, they might not feel that that was quite right. And I think also, I, I know I've heard from some people in town who've said they find it inappropriate, if they want to get in touch with us, that it would go through the town manager first. So, we do have those other, the individual email addresses, and I'm thinking that it would be perhaps wiser for us to promote use of those email addresses to get in touch with us, rather than the select board at Town of Groton. And the other thing I noticed is that on the town manager's page, it lists the contact address for the town manager as select board at Town of Groton, and I think that is, just confuses the issue even more, because is this an email address to speak to the select board, or is this an email address to contact the town manager?
Mine doesn't say town manager at TownofGroton.
It doesn't.
We'll fix that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, it should be clearly that, that the town manager has the town manager at Town of Groton address. And I personally, anytime that I thought about it, I thought, I don't even understand why we have select board at Town of Groton. I think people, taxpayers, citizens in this town deserve to have a way of contacting us that we actually can respond to, and an individual email address does that. So, that's why I wanted to bring it up. I think if we were to decide to change that, to rearrange that page a little bit that we, you were on, Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to the town manager page.
Yeah, but to, to put the, our picture, right where it says contact information, I was, you know, put the pictures of the, of us and the, our individual email addresses first, and then the phone numbers, which are town hall numbers, which of course is what people have to call. I mean, I'm, I'm not advocating that we put up our individual phone numbers, but to reach us rather than someone at the town hall, is, if someone has dug this far in the website to find out how to get in touch with us, I think that they should see our email addresses first. But it is, we do have a whole policy about this, so we, it would require some changes to the policy if we decided to eliminate the address. I think that's something we should think about.
Can, may I ask a question? I'm sorry, John.
John, go ahead.
I see a lot of negatives about eliminating that address. I, I think it's important that people have one place to go with a concern. They know, if they know a select board person and want to talk directly to a select board person, the information's up there. And things should come in and go through a central point, because some of them are things that would be taken care of not by any of us. But I also think that we should know about everything that comes into that address. So that it, I think, one way to consider it is, the message comes in, Dawn or Mark look at it, they make a decision whether initially they're gonna handle it, or they need someone of us to handle it, like a scout request or something like that. But it should go to everybody, like you carbon copy the whole board. So we see every message that comes in to Town of Groton. But, the town manager calls out the ones that are, that are obviously things for him to take care of. But we'll see that message, and he'll put a little note on it that says being taken care of. And then if we have a problem with that, we can call him back, say, hey, or, or... So I think we need to think about something that works that way, assures that every, that the, the select board sees everything sent to that address.
But just a matter of maybe an IT solution, select board, any messages to select board, and I agree with the town manager, pardon me, that he should have zones separate, should be up there, should go to the select board, and then to the town manager and the five select board members, and then you do what you normally would do with them.
The thing I was gonna say is, you're all busy, this isn't your full-time job, it's my full-time job, it's Dawn's full-time job. So issues come in, you know, if it just goes to an individual selectman, who knows when you're gonna get to that particular issue? We're here, we're here to respond. I know five years ago, a resident of this town sent in a, a question on the budget to the select board. I assumed it was a question that I could answer, so I answered it, and apparently that was the wrong thing to do at that time, and it caused a big hullabaloo, and that's why we have the policy in place. Since that time, I don't know of any instance where a person has been upset about me seeing an email or responding to a particular email. I make sure that the board gets all the email that comes in, I make sure you're fully informed of issues that come before the board, and it works. I'm just afraid if we change this, and it goes to individual selectmen, something's gonna happen, and the ball's gonna get dropped somehow. And it's no disrespect to the board, and I don't mean to sound disrespectful, I'm just concerned.
Sorry, how much traffic comes in through this email? I mean, is this something you guys get? Five a day, one a week?
Maybe a couple, couple, three a week. Not a lot of... Yeah, we get a lot, we get a lot of spam to that, but...
We don't let that.
When an issue, when an issue comes in, when an issue comes in that, that needs to be addressed, sometimes it's to me, asking me to deal with it, and I forward it to the board as an informational piece, so that you know it's, what's happening. You pay me to do a job, I'm here to do that job, I want to do that job, so that's my full-time responsibility. I'm just afraid that if we change the way we do things, something's gonna fall through the cracks, and then people are gonna wonder why they didn't get a response. Because if I don't respond right away, people will say, hey, how come you haven't got back to it right away?
I, I agree that you have to respond right away, and I think that you should, there should clearly be an email address to reach you. I think if someone wants to reach the members of the board, and we all, when they send emails to all of us, it's up to us to respond, and if it falls through the cracks, it's not your fault, Mark.
Somehow everything becomes my fault, Becky.
No, I, I disagree. I think that we are...
I know, I was trying to be funny.
We are elected by the taxpayers of this town, and I think that taxpayers should have a way to reach us, which they do, and I think it confuses things a little bit to have that, and, and I do know, I wasn't on the board five years ago, but since I've been on the board, there was a, a specific complaint about having sent an email to that address and gotten a response from you. So, I think, and I know, other people have said to me, you know, I wouldn't send, use that address because the town manager reads it, and what if I want to send you an email, you know, telling you that I think he should, he should do something different, or about his contract, or when his evaluation's coming up? So, we do have the individual email addresses, I'm mostly wanting us to promote those a little bit better, and to, you know, if we as a board end up deciding that we want to keep that select board address, I would want that relegated less prominently, and have the individual ones more prominent.
So, Mark, does it make sense as a next step? You know, I think we've, we've kind of heard where folks are at, I don't know what Josh's thoughts are, you and I are gonna start into kind of that review of every policy known to man?
Yes, we are.
You know, can we, when we get to that policy, can we bring this back up and, and look at it at that point? Is that sufficient? Do we...
This is one of the policies that Brooks and Durensis flagged as having, needing a little bit of work in their review, by the way, so...
Okay.
I, I guess I would suggest that we bring this up again relatively soon with the whole board, and, like I said, if, if the majority of the board wants to continue having that address, I don't think that's a problem. I, I don't think it's particularly useful, my main purpose is, I would like the individual ones promoted more as the way to reach us.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll talk about it, I don't, I...
Into ongoing...
Oh, wait a minute, can I ask another, have another question? On a different topic. So we did get the email from Brooks and Durensis about the policies, and I'm just wondering, what is our next step on that? What, what is gonna happen?
I believe the next step is that Mark and I, I have been assigned to that as my goal, or as, I was the person responsible for that in our goals. We'll, we'll start delving into those and going through, and...
Wow, that's a huge amount of work for you.
Yeah, I don't know what, I mean...
Well, I, I wasn't sure either, I wondered if we should, at some point, and I don't know if it's the next step or not, plan to have a workshop session with them?
What I was gonna suggest is, after Allison and I go through Brooks and Durensis's comments, red line policies to bring to the full board, that should be a workshop, I agree with Becky a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
I think that makes sense.
That makes sense, right?
Right, and, and I was gonna volunteer to take some of that responsibility, if you want to shed it, I would be happy to share that with you.
Let us start in, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Into other ongoing issues, one of the things that you saw in your mail this past week was a decision from the Attorney General on an appeal that we were violating the open meeting law by doing this, we are not, so we will continue to do this. I'm glad the Attorney General supported that position.
They did suggest a change in wording?
We did that, and that's, we had already done that before, we had done that since the appeal.
Ah.
So this is what we, what we have, and then we added this language at the bottom, so this does what the AG had suggested in their thing, so I think we're in one hundred percent compliance with the AG.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I...
Which is good.
I looked at a recent agenda, and I thought, I'm not sure how I would suggest changing this, but you, you already had done it, thank you.
We were, we were very proactive back in the, when the, when the appeal first came in. The bottom line is, we can do this, and there's nothing wrong with this.
What came back, said we needed to spend some time thinking about how we identified on any of these items that we think there's gonna be a vote on.
Putting it up on the agenda.
It's by the item in the agenda.
Correct.
Not one statement at the bottom that says votes may be taken at any time. So to get, we have to get specific.
And, and a prime example of that is on your ongoing issues list is the proposed policy on major initiative planning. When the board, when I was ready to bring that to the board for action, it moved up here to a specific agenda. to a specific agenda item for board action. So that's what we do, and that's what the Attorney General wants us to do, so we've been pretty, pretty good about that.
And if that was, what was moved up there was going to get voted on, or expected to be voted on at that meeting, there needed to be in brackets at the end.
Well, yeah.
Most probable or something.
Well, I used to put vote may be taken after everything on the agenda item, and the board told me not to do that anymore, but.
Well, look at what they've said in their message.
We could talk about it, brainstorm some ideas.
Yep, but I think we're in good shape with our agenda. Going through the ongoing issues list, senior center, we're still on target for October 22nd move-in date. Town hall renovations, I'm a little disappointed in the slowdown from our insurance company. I thought there was going to be some more demolitions past weekend. It didn't happen. So I've talked to Tom about trying to light a fire under them, because as much as I love being in a trailer, I do not love being in a trailer. I want to be back in the town hall. So we're trying to get this moving, moving on. But with regards to the assessors office, I don't know if you all came in on the first floor. That project is well underway and almost done. It looks great.
How else would we have come in, Mark, if not on the first floor?
I don't know if you walked, I don't know if you came right up the stairs. I don't know if you came in the front door and walked up the stairs.
I did.
I don't know if you walked by the assessors office.
So, well.
So, I'm sorry. Would you come in the first floor and walk by the assessors office? Yeah, I almost would have come in here.
I'm a little punchy.
I understand that point.
John?
I'm, Mark and I have talked about this. I'm still a little concerned about us providing significant different heights for wheelchairs and for people who are going to stand up at both the treasurer's office and here, at this new location. Because it's not, it's not practical to be bending over at a 90-degree angle to sign something on a counter if you're standing on two legs. But it's not reasonable to expect somebody in a wheelchair to reach up above their head and try and put something on a shelf.
Can we do the things, Mark, like they have at the grocery store, that kind of pull out?
You could do something like that.
Something like that, but, I don't know.
We're in the process right now of picking out the counter, so if you get a chance, when you meet tonight, please, go down and look. It looks pretty cool. Prescott School Sprinkler System Project, the reason I left the meeting tonight to go down to the CPC was to talk to them about a potential out-of-cycle application through CPC fundings for this particular project. Basically, where we are is, we have about $260,000 left in the original appropriation of $280,000. We're going to use $30,000 of that to bring an engineer in to actually design the specifications for the building to go out to bid. It's our intention to go out to bid in September, with bids due in October. I asked the CPC to consider putting a placeholder article on the warrant so that if the bids come in higher than we have left, town meeting would have the opportunity to consider adding additional funding that to cover the cost. The problem is, is if we don't do that, and the bids come in higher than we have, we'll have to reject all the bids, and now we are another six months down the road, and we have to go out to bid again. So they are, I don't know what their decision was tonight. They understood my request, and they are considering it. So that's where we are with that, with that project. Green Communities, we have an engineer who's doing our evaluation right now. I'm expecting to hear from the state any day now that the grant for having the MRPC, or MRPC, right, do the application for us is on target. So that continues to move well. With regards to the proposed policy on major initiative planning, I sent the information off to the Finance Committee. I'm receiving input from members of the Finance Committee. Once we're ready to bring back a final draft to the board, we will. I asked the Finance Committee to get back to me by the end of August so that we can move forward. We've already advertised the position. I've received one applicant so far to be on it, so we're happy about that. Hopefully, more are to follow. So that's in process as well. You received an update that the charter has made it to the second reading in the House, and.
No, it made it to the third.
Third reading. It's gone through second readings. Made to the third reading, which means it's almost law. Almost. We're very close. Florence Roach, I have no update on that.
He skipped sidewalk.
I have no update on the sidewalk.
Is this?
Well, that was, that installation of that, we had left up there because we had this open issue on the crosswalk lights down at the middle school campus.
And there's an article on the warrant for the money for that.
And so that's still up there, I guess.
So it's only just there because of that cross?
Correct.
I believe that's the only open item.
Everything else is done.
Well, they're still working on doing the streetlights, but that'll come, come along in place.
Absolutely. That's, that's being done by our light department. Library roof repair, you saw, noticed it went out that Judy.
The scaffolding, I know.
Starting Wednesday. So you're going to see a lot of mobilization at the library. So that project is well underway, will get well underway this week when they stop putting the scaffolding up. That's a major undertaking in and of itself. Highway garage renovations are going well. We are moving forward. Although I did, I did receive a bit of bad news from the Electric Light Commission. There was some sort of miscommunication between the general manager and the light commission on the amount of money that they were going to pay for the generator. We presented to town meeting, it would be $200,000. That's what the general manager had told us. But when it went back to the light commission, they only voted $180,000. So that gives us a $20,000 hit in our contingency for that. I'm hoping that we'll be able to survive that $20,000. But I just wanted to let you know that the light commission has reduced, still very generous and still appreciative of the $180, but I was counting on $200,000, so.
Well, the other alternative, we can't come up with the 20, is we get a smaller generator that meets our needs. I mean, the generator that they were going to put in there was more than enough to meet our needs. It had, and, you know, I don't know whether their solar field down there with Groton School is, you know, I don't know what's going on there, but.
We could decide to downsize.
We could downsize it and just limit it to our use.
Correct.
We have to.
We get the $180, though, huh?
No, we wouldn't get the $180.
So that's going to really downsize.
Yeah. I'm hoping we can work it all out. So I just wanted to let the board, make the board aware of that. No update on either of, on the Pepper landfill. I know Becky had asked me at the last meeting to provide her with the process. I think I did that, Becky?
Yes, you did, and I didn't do anything for it tonight, because again, it's something I think we really need the whole board to discuss. I'm hoping for the next meeting, when I assume we'll all be here.
I'm hoping that too. But I would ask you, Becky, not to bring it up at that meeting, because that agenda is already the leg to this table. So I'll, I'll work with you on getting the right time.
Are you talking about K or L? L. Okay, that's right.
I have something that's not on that list that I want to share with the board for the last update. Maybe I should have done this other business. I reached out to town council last week, or two weeks, two weeks ago.
No, it was last Friday.
Yeah, but I reached out some two weeks ago, and I said, Paul, I want to sit down with you, and I want to talk about our procedures. I want to talk about communication and relationship. I want to improve that with you moving forward. Paul was very willing to do that. We decided to meet offline. So we met in Westborough last Thursday to talk. Lenny Kokelman and Paul Durensis came to meet with me. We had a very productive meeting. We've worked out a process on how opinions will go to town council, request for information, how town council will respond back. It's sort of a hybrid approach to his intake form versus the way we were doing it before with email. We've come up with a way that I think is going to work really well. We opened the lines of communication. And I said one thing to him that I want to share with the board tonight. He did realize that the board is planning on going out to bid in November. That's a vote that the board took. Last June, I believe he took that vote, July, June, July. What I said to him is, I'd like to do a trial run on this new process with him going through town meeting. And if things seem to be going well with the communication piece and the process, that I would ask the board to hold off on doing that RFP for several months and keep things the way they are. And he had no problem leaving labor with KP and him handling the rest. So I just wanted to let the board know. That was a great conversation. I thought it was very productive, and I'm happy that we had that conversation. And I expect there to be less issues in terms of, yeah, moving forward.
Good, great.
That's all I have.
That's all good. The next item is, do we have any liaison reports? MBTA continues to do well, John?
We have new trains coming, but not, we haven't got any coming this way yet.
No.
The Orange Line's got a few.
The master plant implementation committee is close to finalizing drafts of a mammoth spreadsheet that lists tasks. Every task that was in the master plan has been put into the spreadsheet and status information about every one of those. The cover letter is being drafted now, so the report probably, you know, before the middle or end of September, we'll go back to the planning board.
Great. And then we have one set of minutes for review, discussion, and approval from July 29th, our regular meeting.
I move, we approve the minutes of July 29th, 2019, regular meeting.
Is there a second?
A second, yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Dawn continues to stay on top of minutes. We are up to date with all minutes. If we can go to executive session and approve the July 9th, I think the only outstanding minutes will be tonight and tonight's executive session.
And one previous.
One previous. So we're in great shape with the minutes.
Yes, and that's appreciated, Dawn.
Believe me, it's awesome.
No small task.
Yep. So I'd ask the board to return to executive session.
Yes, we will adjourn our regular meeting and re-enter executive session with no intention of returning back out to regular session.
We have to do a vote. No, no, we don't.
I don't know. I don't think we are returning.